Ladies and gentlemen, the June 4th, 2008 meeting of the City Council is called to order. The meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. The council meeting as well as all other KCLV programming can be viewed on the city's website at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web, the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. This building is protected by a state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. I've been asked each time we begin these meetings to advise the audience that if alarms should activate, then please leave through the exit and we'll have our city marshals greet you outside and let you know when it's all right to re-enter the building. Earlier this morning, we actually had a, either was a drill or an incident because I got caught up on the ninth floor and had to walk down and my council was very critical that I was late this morning, but that's the reason I, while you were taking elevators, I was walking, okay? But I make that announcement as a matter of course, no reason to believe that that will take place. So, before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Reverend George Bolgin, Metropolitan Community Church, and please remain standing for the pledge.
May your will be done on earth as it is in heaven, compassionate source of a beautiful and diverse universe. We take this short moment to pause. We do this so that we may have a clearer picture of your will in heaven and more closely reflected in this city which we love. You are caring and compassionate. May our interactions reflect that. May we be welcoming and tolerant. May we be gentle and kind when dealing with each other as neighbors, as family, as friends, as all your children. You create with beauty. May our work reflect that. Just like you, may we appreciate and value those that encourage beauty to flourish. You sustain in diversity. May our world reflect that. We come from different backgrounds. We picture you in many different ways and call you by many different names, and yet there are things we share. We each have heard a voice which called us to serve. We have a childlike confidence that you will continue to inspire us in our service. And so, we take this moment to pause, to hear once again that loving voice we first heard, that voice which called us to share our gifts in service. Speak to us once more, encourage us, empower us, inspire us. This is our prayer. Amen.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the ceremonial portion of our agenda, and for our first item this morning, Councilwoman Tarkanian is going to honor our June Citizen of the Month. Councilwoman, what happened to you? Where are you? Where did Councilwoman go? No, I'm kidding.
I just, I have a look at qualifications here and I was just checking.
Okay. All right, let's see. Nope.
Could we move that further back, Sam?
Sure, certainly. Okay. Okay, we'll start off with a different item then. We're very malleable here, we can adjust anything. We'd like to recognize the winners of the recent Helado Parade Contest. In 2005, as part of the city's centennial celebration, we resurrected the Helado Parade, and this parade has been a part of the city's history dating back to the 1930s. This year, we had more than 100 entries ranging from walking groups to elaborate floats, and on May the 17th, participants competed in four different categories. And we have the winners with us today, and I'm going to ask the winners as I announce their category to please join us up here. For the best overall entry, the Mexican Patriotic Committee, Eddie Escobedo, is here to accept the award. Eddie, are you here? Is anybody here from the Mexican Patriotic Committee? All right, then I will take it. Okay, I'll accept the award. Do you have it?
Yes, right here. May I have a question, please, sir?
Thank you very much. On behalf of the, oh, somebody made an excellent suggestion. They suggested that we put some libations in here and drink therefrom. We'll see what we'll do. Okay. Okay, for the best use of a theme in an entry, the Fiber Arts Guild, Nancy Bellion is here to accept that award. Let's have a round of applause. Take your time, take your time. Okay, I know the feeling. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you.
Well, the Fiber Arts Guild has been in existence since 1967. I'm the last charter member. We worked hard on our float. This year, we had lights on it, so we were really seen. So it was really nice and we had a good time. Of course, this time, we got to sit in the shade for three hours before the float, so before it started, so that was even better. Thank you.
Congratulations. Would you like to be here?
No.
Okay, what's your name? Jim? Of course. Okay, thank you very much, and may we present this to you, please.
You want to ask your character? Yes, please.
Very good, thank you. Congratulations. For the most creative entry, the Nevada Ranger Cowboy Action Shooters get the top honor. Unfortunately, they couldn't be with us today, so I'll take that home as well. Okay?
More libations.
More libations. For the best city staff entry, the trophy goes to the Historic Preservation Committee, and here to accept the trophy is our friend Bob Stodall, Chair of the City's Historical Preservation Commission. Congratulations, Bob. You got a little one. Hi, how are you? Good seeing you.
This is, just like to introduce Jim Veltman, who is Chairman of our Float Committee. We now have a float committee, and we will see you next year with a bigger and better float.
Very good, thank you very much.
We appreciate it, thank you. And finally, but they're not the least in the category is for sure, the trophy goes to the Cimarron Memorial High School Marching Band. Anybody from Cimarron? Well, I have to say this, whoever arranged this particular agenda item should be fired.
I mean, this is outrageous.
All these wonderful people who did such great things for the city, made Helado a great parade, and just one, just one group of winners are here, but thank you for coming down, we really appreciate it.
They're way back there in the back, sir.
Oh, they're the culprits. Okay, you're fired. Okay, thank you very much. And I'd like to thank the judges, of course, who have some very tough decisions to make. If they please stand Richanne Bender, Brenda Hughes, Romeo Batia, and Nicole Batia. And I want to thank all the city employees who participated in the event. They did it on their own time, and it was really a tremendous job in representing the city. Everybody had a great time at the parade. Okay, for our next item, we'd like to recognize a very special organization, the Make-A-Wish Foundation, as they kick off their national 10-day awareness campaign. Joining us today, and please come up, is President Karen Iglesias and Development Associate Emily Williams of the local Southern Nevada chapter, Kendall Tenney, our good friend from Channel 3, who is the face of the Walk-a-thon, and also joining them is Wish Child Grace Hodges and her siblings, Victoria, Beth, and Jack, and Wish Children Maggie and Molly, cetera. Everybody coming up? Come on up, we're going to get you a television, this is a big deal. You'll be able to watch this. The Make-A-Wish Foundation of America was founded in 1980, and since that time, has granted wishes to more than 161,000 children nationally who are diagnosed with life-threatening medical conditions. The local chapter of the organization formed in 1996 and has helped more than 870 youngsters in our community. The Make-A-Wish Foundation of America has created a 10-day public awareness campaign titled Destination Joy to inspire Americans to use their much-needed talents and resources to help grant the wishes of children who are diagnosed with these severe medical conditions. So, I'd just like to ad-lib this a little bit. Kendall and his group always ask me to come down and to sort of kick off the walk, and it's probably one of the most poignant moments each year that I experience because the youngsters are just beautiful youngsters, their parents and relatives are just great human beings, and I think it's an honor and a privilege that you allow me to do that. I really look forward to it because the kids are absolutely the best that, the best that we have, that's for sure. So, on behalf of the entire City Council, I'm happy to proclaim June the 4th as Destination Joy Day in the city of Las Vegas, and we ask all the citizens to get involved with this effort. So, Karen, would you please tell us more about the campaign and how the community can get involved?
Yes, the campaign is to raise awareness across our community that it's not just celebrities that can get involved with granting wishes. Everybody can take part, and we have a wonderful mission. We've granted 150 wishes this year in our community to children with life-threatening medical conditions, but we desperately need your help. We're out there raising funds, please help us either by donating to the organization, volunteering your time, or donating resources such as air miles which helps us to send these very special and most deserving children on their heartfelt dreams come true. And I'm going to hand over to Kendall, the Chairman of our Board of Directors, to tell you a little bit more about the organization.
Thanks. First, I'm wondering if I can go ahead and pay my parking ticket because I ran out of quarters. All right. I do want to say thank you to the mayor and the City Council and the city of Las Vegas for their tremendous support that they have given to the Make-A-Wish Foundation of Southern Nevada, not only with the walk, but so much that this organization does. Karen is a tremendous leader for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. It is an organization that makes a great difference in the lives of children like Grace over here who are going through some tough times and dealing with some life-threatening conditions. It offers them an opportunity to wish for anything. Sometimes they go to Disney World, sometimes they meet their favorite celebrities, sometimes they become a person for a day, be it a doctor, a firefighter, or whatever, but it gives them something they can't find in a doctor's office, or in a hospital, or in a prescription bottle. It is hope that really does have a miraculous power, and that's why we talk all the time about the power of a wish. So, Mayor and everyone else, thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thanks for coming down. Would you like to say anything? Would you like to say anything? You sure? Okay, thank you for joining us here today. We appreciate it. For our next item, Councilman Wilson is going to recognize our Public Works Department for a recent award. Councilman?
Today, we have a very special presentation that recognizes the hard work of city staff and an iconic fire station in Ward 2. Fire Station 47 is being recognized as the Project of the Year by the American Public Works Association. Our newest fire station, number 47, opened in April of 2007 and was the 16th station to serve our residents. It is located at 911 Ridge Pine Street, which for any of you who don't know where that is, it's in the far west area of the city, on far hills west of the 215. And I think we have some video of the station, and if we do, could we please play that now? Protecting our community is one of the priorities here at the city, and we do this by providing new, state-of-the-art facilities for our fire department, which in turn allows us to provide better service to our residents and visitors. This station has already reduced response time in the area and relieved response calls from Stations 7 and 45. It will also cover future development in Summerlin, west of the 215. The station is a great example of how the private and public sectors can work well together. City staff designed the project, while the Howard Hughes Corporation provided the land and paid to have the facility built. The station was then turned over to Las Vegas Fire and Rescue. To help in this presentation, I'd like to ask Les Henley and Michael Holloway, both of the APWA, to join us, to join us here at the podium. I'd also like to ask Jorge Cervantes, Director of our Public Works Department, and Greg Gammon, our Fire Chief, to join us up here. And then finally, Vice President Julie Cleaver from the Howard Hughes Corporation. Julie, are you here?
Yes.
Great, come on up. And if you don't mind, sir, before I turn it over to you to say a few words, I'd like to recognize from the city's design team, Architectural Project Manager Sam Tolman, who could not be here today, Designer Eric Singman, are you here, Eric? Okay, thank you, Eric. Landscape Architect Claire Lewis. Claire, thank you so much. Principal Designer Frank Trupiano, did I pronounce that right? Doesn't matter, he's not here. Senior Graphic Illustrator John Easton, John, are you here? Thank you so much. From Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, Louis Baker. Louis, thank you so much. And I'll now turn the microphone over to you, Mr. Henley, or Mr. Holloway, whichever is stepped last.
Thank you, Councilman. My name's Les Henley, and I am President of the Nevada Chapter of the American Public Works Association. As you said, I'm joined this morning by Michael Holloway, who's Vice President of the Nevada Chapter. Each year, the Nevada Chapter of the American Public Works Association recognizes outstanding public projects in the categories of transportation facilities, environmental works, and structures. Earlier this year, the Nevada Chapter of APWA selected the city of Las Vegas as Fire Station 47 as the state's Structural Project of the Year under $5 million in cost. This determination was made following a fierce head-to-head competition against other agencies and other projects of similar types and sizes. We congratulate you on this award-winning project and your outstanding project team, which you've already recognized. To recognize and commemorate this achievement, it's my pleasure and Michael's pleasure to present award plaques to representatives of the city of Las Vegas, and I believe we have two that we're presenting to Jorge Cervantes, your new Public Works Director, congratulations, Jorge, and to Greg Gammon, your Fire Chief, congratulations, Chief. And please join me in recognizing this outstanding project and this outstanding project team.
Thank you. If you don't mind, Chief, if you don't mind, I'm going to put you on the spot a little. Response time is something that is so important. Could you tell the folks that are listening what Station 47 has done to the response times in that immediate area and the surrounding areas?
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. In the fire service, one of the most important barometers that we have as we determine where we place our fire stations and how we gauge ourself, as how we do as a fire department, is how quickly that we can get to an emergency. So, response times, or the number-one goal that we have each day when we come to work is how quickly can we get to an emergency? That's what the public wants, that's what they expect of us, and that's what we expect of our firefighters. So, this new Fire Station 47, the impact that it's had on Stations 45, Stations 2, and Stations 7, has reduced their response times by approximately two minutes, which in an emergency, a life-and-death emergency, is quite a bit. So, we thank the men and women who, excuse me, who are up here. This is a beautiful station, and throughout the country, we're known as having some of the most beautiful stations anywhere, and there's none more beautiful than this. The residents that are up there, they get to look at it each day, we get the pleasure of living in it. And it's just a great station, it's very, it's great to look at. It fits in with the community, and we're very pleased and very appreciative of all the work that everyone has done.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Julie. Thank you very much. Now, Councilman Barnlow is going to recognize the UNLV program for a nursing program, for a recent study just conducted. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. The University of Nevada Las Vegas Nursing Students conducted a survey at one of my local elementary schools in Ward 5 at the Twin Lakes Elementary Schools. You may be aware that I have collaborated with UNLV's nursing program, and just as recently, earlier this year, I have previously commended one group of students for their outstanding research regarding our homeless population. The next group of UNLV Nursing Students today conducted a study on obesity. So, today, I wanted to take another opportunity to share with you all the UNLV students' commitment to making our community a better place. After receiving and assessing some of the hot topics from the homeless research, they decided to conduct additional research regarding childhood obesity and the diseases affiliated. Under the direction of Dr. Michelle Clark, whom I would ask to come forward, please, and give her a round of applause as she comes. Thank you, Dr. Clark. Students went out to Twin Lakes Elementary School and talked with faculty, staff, and students. They shared their plans to conduct the research and evaluate the surrounding outside amenities. Twin Lakes was thrilled to participate. All faculty and children were very cooperative and eager. They provided ways for the school to continue to provide information through their website about health and nutrition for the entire family. Everyone was anxious to learn about preventing obesity. Tremendous support from the community is what you all were able to really pull together and harness. I am so proud to have such an enthusiastic future of nurses and doctors evaluating schools in my ward. The majority of the population consists of ethnic groups more prone to obesity and related diseases such as diabetes. Educating our youth on their decisions to choose more nutritional foods and increasing their recreational activities will prepare our young people for healthier and productive lifestyles. Please help me as we recognize our community's future nurses and doctors from the University of Nevada Las Vegas. Thank you so very much. And, at this time, I understand that we have one student, Ms. Ladonna Mills. Would you please come forward, one of the nursing students from UNLV? Please give her a round of applause. And although Ladonna was not the only nursing student, I would like to recognize your peers as well as your colleagues in the nursing program, Mary Ann Malik, Susan Trujillo, William Howes, Ladonna Mills, of course, Carla Bezos, Jennifer Ashley. And I would, at this time, if you will come forward, Dr. Mills, as well as Ladonna, and please share with this council and the viewers your experience, your experience with the research that you've conducted. Please come forward, and thank you again.
Well, your community was very excited and warm to us, and we appreciate the experience to be able to look at the community of Las Vegas, and especially Ward 5, and initiate some programs that really looked at prevention. And as we all know, obesity is becoming, I hear Las Vegas is, might become number one of one of the heaviest cities in our country, and so we're trying to decrease that. And Ladonna and her classmates worked diligently on this project, and I would like to really acknowledge them and their hard work.
All right. Ladonna, I want you just to say a couple words, please.
Well, thank you for recognizing us, it means a lot to us, and I want to take this on behalf of all my nursing students that wasn't able to be here. We've already graduated, so everybody's studying now for their boards, so, but thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations, see you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, now we're going to have Councilwoman Tarkanian honor the June Citizen of the Month. Councilwoman?
Yes. Today, we are going to honor a very special person. Her name is Vienna Hernandez. Vienna has been, and I'd like to have you come up right now, Vienna, because you are so special, I'd like to have everybody see you. This tiny woman packs a lot of strength in helping the community. She has been the apartment manager for Pine Village Apartments for four years. She grew up in Mexico City and moved to the United States at age 13. She has a degree for accounting, however, she didn't enjoy that career. She likes being an apartment manager because it's a challenge, and as she doesn't just fill apartments, she builds communities. She lives on her property, is raising her one-and-a-half-year-old daughter there. She wants to change the community for the better and make it a safe place where children can play outside. I didn't even know her until about a year ago, and we have been working on what we call a keen project in a very difficult area of our city, Arville and Penwood. And this keen project has involved many members of the city staff and Metro, and the name, in fact, was picked out by the principal of Clark High School, keeping everyone's eyes on the neighborhood. And we've been very active since then, working hard, but we knew it can't just be a big rally, it can't just be meetings where you talk, although we do meet every Tuesday, the second Tuesday of the month, at Clark High School. What you need is to permeate the community, let them know the city resources, let them know how we can help. And that's what she has done. And she has organized the apartment managers in that area, covering over 1,000 apartments, which have often been difficult to reach in the past. And doing that, she has helped us raise the community livability and helped us in code enforcement and things along that line. You can't do that just by yourself, however. You also need somebody who's your boss. In California, this one is, Rachel Mullin, would you come up here too, please? And Rachel, we thank you for letting her do what she has done with the apartments. We have so many apartments in our older neighborhoods that are owned by out-of-state companies. And lots of times, they don't care if it looks really nice, if things are safe in the area in which people are living, but we do find some who do care, and you're at the top of that list. And you have helped give the resources to her so that we could do what we needed to do in this area. I'd also like to thank Denise Stride, our own, if you'd just stand Denise. And the reason is because she's represented the city resources in this. Because these ladies not only meet on that second Tuesday of the month, they also meet on a Friday where all the apartment managers. This may not seem like very much, but in a neighborhood, when we first went down the Silver Dollar Alley, I had Metro with me, code enforcement with me, we found stolen cars. I had a little nine-year-old boy who was taking our group from place to place and showing us where they hid the dope. Oh, there, in a utility box. Oh, there, under the wheel of a car. I mean, and it was frightening, some of the things that were happening. This has started to change, and it's not easy to start that change. And so, Vienna, we just want to thank you, we're going to give you the Citizen of the Month Award, so that you can have that at home. And then we also have here the Citizen of the Month from our city, which will be on display outside on city property. And I would like you, if you could, say a few words.
Give her a round of applause.
Here you have someone, lots of people come, and they come for the advantages of living in our country. It's a great country, and a lot of people come and they give so much to our country, and that's what she is.
Thank you. I really want to thank everybody, the owners of the company. I'm sorry, but it's just, it's hard. I didn't know I was coming to get an award, and I didn't know it was the Citizen of the Month, but I really appreciate all the support that I have from the city, from Metro, from the owners of the company. Denise, she's my support on everything. We're still changing the community. The owners are great believers that we can transform communities. And by doing so, we have, and actually, I have a one-year-old baby that... And by doing so, we have, actually, I have a one-year-old baby, that we can go out and walk outside of the apartment without being afraid that somebody's going to be selling drugs. And people are getting together to say that we're here to protect our community, and I really, really appreciate this. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you, and just know from our heart how much all of us appreciate your efforts.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, please. Thank you. Okay. Finally, I'd like to make you aware of a special program set to air this weekend on KCLV Channel Two, the city's government TV station. It focuses on a topic that really is very much on the minds of many of us in the community, on what's being done locally to stop gang violence, especially at schools. Did you know there are about 8,000 gang members and affiliates in our valley representing some 300 separate gangs? That's what you have to deal with over there. And parents, police, school officials, and local governments now are going to start ganging up on the gangs. And this TV program is a must-see for parents and anyone who thinks gang issues are someone else's problem. There are problems. And the show is called Las Vegas Gangs, Not Our Kids. It begins airing this Sunday night at 8:00 p.m. on Cable Channel Two, and I encourage everyone to please tune in. Thank you. We're going to obey that matter. Okay, I just didn't want you to, didn't want you to just be sitting around waiting for an [inaudible].
I didn't know if you wanted me to make any representations, but.
Not today.
All right, I'll just leave then.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then we'll be in touch.
Right, thank you.
Unless you want the public to see your tie, of course.
I was going to say nice things about you guys, so.
No, it's okay. No, no. Okay, item number 10. Any items from the morning session that the council staff under the applicant wished to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and enacted upon at this time. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you. I didn't see Mark out there. Mark, did you want to strike item 16, or you just want to come up and talk about it?
I want to strike 1617. They need to go forward.
Okay. The first one, Your Honor, is item number 16, is a Ward of Contract Number 080266-TB. Lease of Unisys ClearPath Hardware, Software, and Services staff has to strike that item. Item 33 is a Work Card Appeal. Carolyn Fay Henry, Metro's asked to strike. Item 34 is temporary approval of a new tavern license, LLC Cafe Nevada LLC, doing business at Crazy Horse, Two Gentlemen's Club, 2476 Industrial Road. Staffs request that to be held in abeyance until our June 18, 2008 meeting. Item 36 is a temporary approval of a new psychic art and science license, April-John 425 Fremont Street. Staffs asked to strike. And item 43 is R28-2008, resolution in support of the Project Global Green Connection Center. Mayor Goodman has asked that to be stricken. And are there any other items that need to be brought at this time? Send in, Your Honor, make a motion to bring these items forward, take the corporate action, please.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Yes, ma'am. Do you want to be heard before we vote?
Yes, I'd like to ask that item number 27 be stricken or held in abeyance.
That'll be in a few minutes.
That'll be in a moment. Okay? But you can stick around. All right, let's vote on the Mayor Protem's motion, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 11 is approval of the final minutes by reference of the regular city council meeting of May the 7th, 2008. Now, have a motion, please, approving these minutes.
Yes, Your Honor. No addition or deletion. I'd make a motion for approval of those minutes, please.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Items 12 through 27 are on our consent agenda. They're considered to be routine. They're recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items that the council wishes to bring forward at this time?
Yes, Your Honor, we have a request for item number 17, please. I understand we have item 27.
Item 17 and 27. Are there any other items? Does that encompass the item that you desired for? Okay. Anything else? All right, with that in mind, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, Your Honor. I'd make a motion to approve items 12 through 27 with the exceptions of 16, 17, and 27, please.
All right, very good. Let's vote, please. Post.
With all conditions.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll call item number 17. Item 17 is approval of a Ward of RFP Number 070354-LED, design build of the Freedom Park renovation project located 850 North Mojave Road, and the Construction Conflicts and Contingency Reserve set by Finance and Business Services, Department of Public Works. Award recommended to Roach Constructors, Inc., in the amount of $45,993,700 from our Parks and Leisures Activities Capital Projects Fund, and this is in Ward Three. Mr. Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mark Vincent, Director of Finance and Business Services. Just a quick correction on this item. In the recommendation, we, Finance, had established the Conflicts and Contingency Reserve at $459,937. That's incorrect. That's just 1%. We wanted to establish the reserve at 7%. So in your recommendation, we want the Conflicts and Contingency Reserve to be established at $3,219,559.
All right, thank you. May I ask Mayor Protem or yourself, when does the project begin?
Within the next month.
Really? And when should it be completed?
Later part of next year.
Terrific.
Finally.
Finally is great. Okay, that's great.
I just might just want to mention for the record that this combines two projects. It combines the baseball complex with Big League Dreams with the new park. The baseball complex is about 30 acres. It will include six baseball fields and two stadium concessions, batting cages, player areas, and a sports pavilion. And the 30-acre park will include three picnic structures, a new performance area, perimeter walking path, and a lighted skate park, and two soccer fields. So it's a really wonderful project.
Phenomenal project.
Fantastic.
Fantastic project. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to follow staff's recommendation for the correction.
Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 27 is R29-2008, approval of a resolution disposing of protests made at the hearing on the provisional order regarding Special Improvement District Number 1511 Farm Road, Virginia Dale Street to Tulley Spring Road. Okay. Gentlemen?
Mayor and Council, good morning. Jorgez Advan, Department of Public Works. This item is to dispose a protest for Special Improvement District 1511 Farm Road between Tulley Springs and Virginia Street. I did need to, Mayor, make one correction on the agenda, and it's noted. It has a fiscal impact of $86,324.21 per year, and actually, that's the type which should be the total cost. It was not an annual cost, but a total cost.
Of $86,354.21.
That's correct.
Very good. All right. I know these folks wanted to be heard, and I've been advised that I probably misadvised you last time. That was the time that you should be heard, but that was my mistake, so you're not going to suffer for that. Be happy to hear from you.
I had prepared information if you would like.
Yeah, do you want to identify?
Okay. Emily McFarlane Benson, attorney for Patrick and Rhonda Berdrew. And we would ask that this item be held in abeyance at this point in time, if not stricken today, because there are serious issues about the history of what has happened and how we've gotten to a point where there is a request for an assessment that will be, the impact of that will be on one property owner alone, and that amount is $86,000, as we've just heard. And so, we would ask that we be given the opportunity to work with you and work with the staff to actually come to a resolution so that this doesn't have to go to the point of going to district court prematurely.
Well, I, last time, I heard from Councilman Ross, who's the councilman for Ward Six, and he wanted this matter to go forward, so I'm going to turn to him. And what is your position as far as this request?
Your Honor, this individual property owner has been fully aware of the challenges we've had with his property. I fully intend to go forward with this. His legal counsel is intimating that he's planning on taking this to district court, so be it.
All right. All right, would you like to submit anything at this time?
I do. I have information and a copy for each of you, if you'd like.
All right, why don't you do that, please? Please hand it to the clerk, and we'll make this part of the record. All right. And if you'll hand up the other copies to us, I'd appreciate that. Thank you. Yeah, we'll pass them down. All right, and if you'd like to be heard, we're happy to hear from you at this time.
What we're dealing with is a property, an assessment that is affecting one residential property right now. If, in 2004, Rhonda and Patrick Bergson purchased a property, and since then, they have been seeking permission to build and finish a house on there. There have been many and many roadblocks that have come up, and a lot of those have been the result of issues dealing with the city. But in 2005, April 27, 2005, there was an agreement by Richmond Homes to go in and actually do the improvements that are proposed for the assessment today at their cost. And this was denied. These improvements were not done by Richmond, and actually, the city had requested that they go in and revise their plans and not include these improvements in the improvements that were done at that time for surrounding properties. And as a result of that, my client, who is the only property owner for this area, is now facing, being subject to this assessment, the entire assessment, if it is allowed to go forward. So what we're asking is that this be held in abeyance so that we have time to try and work with the city and figure out what we can do so that my client isn't hit with an $86,000 tax bill over the coming years that was unnecessary several years ago because of this agreement in 2005, and may very well have a solution other than just going forward today with it.
Your Honor, if I may.
Yes.
This individual has had several years to comply with our city codes. He has finished a pool without permits. He has finished a home without a certificate of occupancy. If you look at the overhead, all of the other developments around his parcel have paid for their off-site improvements long before I was elected. I was approached about this property and the lack of the improvements surrounding this property. This is the last parcel that needs to be improved, and I fully support our Public Works Department in moving forward with this. He's had several years to comply. The patience meter has run out. It's time to buckle down and take care of this and comply with all of our building department codes and our public works.
Very good. Well, we're going to go forward. Apparently, there's going to be a motion, so does this encompass the record that you wanted if you have to go to court?
Yes, this is the record that, yes.
I want to make sure that that's the case. Okay, yeah. Counselor Ross?
Thank you, Your Honor. My motion is to move forward with the agenda item 27.
All right. We have moved forward with it, and now a motion as far as the adoption of the resolution.
To adopt the resolution, follow staff's recommendation.
Very good. All right, let's vote. Post. Motion carries. And this is part of the record. Very good. Okay, thank you. Item 28 is hearing to consider the appeal regarding nuisance notice and order regarding vacant, dangerous building property located at 1500 Rancho Circle. The property owners are Tellus Allen Revocable Trust, Jackson John, A TRS ETA, Care of J. Miller, TRS Ward One. Is this the, is this the matter that we had before us at one time?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. All right, Mrs. Smith?
I should state for the record that my son, Ross, owns a piece of property in this complex, but it's far enough removed that I don't believe that he will be affected directly or any differently than any other member in the complex, and I am not going to abstain. I'll vote on this.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, too, and make a request of council to be sure that this is appropriate for me to vote on this at this time. My daughter also owns property there at some distance. I do not think there will be a financial implication. Since then, however, she now is on the board, which, since this item occurred, their board, which used to meet, as I was told, once a year, is now meeting more than that, and they have revised the members. She's now on that board. So I wanted to ask the attorney if I can still vote on this. I don't think it would affect my determination or objectivity, but I want to be sure.
When you talk about a board, what do you mean a board?
It's the homeowners' association board.
Are they involved in this matter at all?
Are they involved in it now? I don't, they were not involved in it when this happened, but they are involved since in what has happened, yes. Individual members of it are. I don't attend every one of their meetings, so I don't know.
Well, I don't think there's a direct impact, so it depends on whether or not you feel you can be objective in considering the matter.
Well, I feel I can be objective because the reason of the original denial was based upon our code, just strictly that, on how we can give a variance or not give a variance. So I will vote.
I think the record should further reflect that. At the time we heard this matter originally, we asked the applicant-owner whether or not, based on our representations as to having associations or relationships with people who lived in that complex or own property in that complex, whether or not he wanted us to abstain or to recuse ourselves. He indicated that he had no objection to us going forward.
I just want to make for the record, I do have objection.
What's your name?
My name is John Jackson. I'm co-trustee for the Allen Tellus Revocable Trust.
Okay, what's your objection?
My objection is that I don't believe, as far as Councilwoman Tarkanian, that her disclosure has been accurate or complete. And my objection to you, Mr. Mayor, even though I would appreciate you staying, and I think you can be impartial, in response to this notice of violation, which I will get into as we debate the merits of it, I believe that the code is not being properly enforced in the Rancho Circle neighborhood, and as a result, I did have complaints filed with the Neighborhood Service Department that has issued notices and orders to other residents in Rancho Circle, including your son.
All right.
And given that there could be.
That's fine. I'll abstain.
Could you just tell me what you think I've been inaccurate in disclosing, because I thought I was accurate?
Take it over.
I'm saying, my daughter lives there.
Yep.
I'm saying that the motion that I made was based upon, and I was very clear about that, the interpretation from our code on what can be a variance or not a variance. What have I not done properly?
Well, there's quite a history and quite a story here to tell, and I would be happy when we get into the merits to tell the story. I would give you the opportunity to, then, after you hear the story, to decide at that time whether you would like to abstain.
I know, okay, then we'll determine afterwards if I should abstain. I do want you to know, please don't.
Well, I feel I need, we need, excuse me. Mr. Steed, do you feel like we can go into this debate and then have her abstain after, or should we have that first? I want to know whether she's going to have to abstain now rather than later.
Well, if she's not participating actively, I think she can wait until she has enough facts to decide whether she needs to abstain. And at that point, make a decision.
So by not participating accurately, I can ask questions?
You can ask questions, but as far as debating and reaching conclusions, I think it'd be better to wait.
I wouldn't debate or reach conclusions. My only concern is that information has been given by this gentleman and the other person who occupies the home, that I held a meeting with neighbors, and that I was all involved, which was not accurate whatsoever. The only time I talked with neighbors was after I was invited by the other individual involved as the applicant to look at the property, which I did, and while I was there, as neighbors drove by and a few of them stopped, I had no formal meeting whatsoever. meeting whatsoever. The other inaccuracy that has been given is that I had the, or I saw the petition the day before and I had a copy of the petition before we had a vote and that's totally inaccurate. I never did. Never had it in my hands, never did anything. So I just want to say that on the record first and then I'll wait until later.
Maybe we should get into this because as you can see...
Sir, I, I think we better have Mr. Smith explain to us again what, what we're doing here today.
Okay, Mayor and Counsel, Don Smith, manager of Neighborhood Response. The purpose and background is that the subject property was determined to be a public nuisance as defined in Las Vegas Municipal Code Title IX, Chapter IX, Dealing with Nuisances. A nuisance notice and order regarding vacant dangerous buildings was mailed to the property owner to correct the public nuisance as defined in Las Vegas Municipal Code 16.31. A copy of the notice was also posted on the property. Today's hearing is to consider the appeal of the nuisance and order regarding vacant dangerous building filed by John Jackson, trustee and responsible party. The recommendation is that the city council approve the nuisance and order regarding vacant dangerous buildings. And just for the record, Mayor and Counsel, as of yesterday, most of the violations have been corrected and the property pretty much has been cleaned up. And what we're looking for at this point is for, to have a mitigation plan on the intent of the property, get the necessary permits to finish the, start the construction on the property and bring this house into compliance with the rest of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
I just want to say, I had wanted to stay to hear this because of the inaccurate information and I was offended by that. I thought we should have accuracy, but I also feel it's better for this council if I did abstain. So I will abstain right now.
Thank you. Okay, what was your name again, sir?
John Jackson and I'm co-trustee for the Allen Tellis Revocable Trust. As we started to get into, this whole matter arises from a variance request that we made for a eight-foot wall that came before this council on March 19th. I'm here to appeal the notice of order and violation from the Neighborhood Services Department, but I'm also here as a citizen of Las Vegas to ask why the residents of Rancho Circle are not subject to the municipal code of Las Vegas and to ask why the residents of Rancho Circle are not subject to the state laws of Nevada and to ask why Councilwoman Tarkanian acts above and outside the ethics rules that govern elected officials.
Mayor Protem.
Yes.
With due respect to Mr. Jackson, to our legal counsel, if, I think he indicated he's here for the report of expenses, but the two, three, four, five things he's listed, is that within our purview today to start hearing?
Isn't it an appeal of a notice and order rather than, so he's entitled to be heard, but if you believe that he's, if you believe that he's going off topic, you can certainly rein in the discussion.
And, and I, I think part of, at least from what I'm getting, part of the perhaps argument is going to be that people are being treated unfairly in a neighborhood or treated differently in a neighborhood. Does that pertain to addressing specifically what he is here for his property to?
I don't believe so, but if you're, if you want to listen to it, you can, but what really ought to happen is addressing the outstanding issues that Mr. Smith talked about.
And I would just appreciate that and I'm certainly willing to hear as, as much as you want to talk about, but let's, at least for my, my personal, from my perspective, let's separate the two so I can focus in on what we're here for and then also listen to what you have to offer.
Sure, and I think if you hear me out, you'll see that everything I have to tell you is relevant to why we are here. The background of this information is very necessary. While all of you as council members were here on March 19th to hear the story as it was presented at that time, it was not a fair and complete and accurate story. And the citizens of Las Vegas who might be watching today, and the very purpose we have the open meeting laws is so they understand the background. If we were to jump immediately to discussing just the notice of order, I'm afraid there's a lot of these issues that would not be understandable. So having said that, I, I will address why I'm here today, but to give you the background information that's appropriate is that we were here on March 19th to appeal a unanimous decision of the planning commission. And during that hearing, Lois Tarkanian, Councilwoman Tarkanian, participated in that. But prior to the hearing, and what didn't come out in that hearing is that Councilwoman Tarkanian filed the appeal that brought it here and that was not appropriate. And I believe it's a violation of the ethics rules. The purpose of the ethics rules, keep in mind, is to avoid the appearance of impropriety.
Again, Mr. Jackson, this is fine, but I, I'd rather you address what's before us and then if you want and if the council's willing to, get into all that other stuff. But I don't, I don't see the relationship. It was a very public hearing and everyone was given the opportunity, so specifically, if you'd like to address what's before us, but when you start talking about ethics and one of my colleagues that's abstained here, I don't think that's relevant to why we're here today. Now, it may be later on if you want to take further action down the road.
Counselor, if, if I could, I, I want to get into what we're here for today.
Okay.
And we, we will discuss that and then if there's any other hearings we have to, we can have the other hearing.
And Mayor Protem, I'll ask the city council, am I asking too much or?
No, the, the item that he's talking about is a zoning item, is that correct? And that's done and over with. We're talking here about a dangerous or an abatement under Title IX.
Okay.
And that's, that's what's at issue.
Now, let me point out that when we started this discussion about whether or not Councilwoman Tarkanian had a conflict, I asked that I reserve my right to speak to that conflict as I got into the story and I was granted the opportunity to do so. So if now we're going to circumvent my right to state on the record the conflicts that Councilwoman Tarkanian has, then I want to go back and revisit that issue because I do think I have a right to put on the record the conflict of interest that Councilwoman Tarkanian has. She has not properly disclosed today on this matter and I would like to discuss her conflicts on this matter, on the notice of violation.
Let me just say that the earlier conversation about letting you be heard was about the item on the agenda, not about a zoning item.
That's not correct. I offered Councilwoman Tarkanian to hear me out and then make her decision if she would like to abstain at that time. As I told her, rather than get into it now, I would give her an opportunity to do it later. I would now like to take back the opportunity to put on the record why Councilwoman Tarkanian's disclosure today is not complete. And I'm going to, and I think once you hear this, you'll understand why her disclosure is not complete. First off, we know that she didn't recuse herself from the hearing last time. She's done so this time and that's appropriate. What she didn't disclose before, as I was getting into, was that she is the person who made the appeal. The ethics rules require that you make disclosure at the time you take action. The time she took action is when she appealed the decision of the planning commission. She did not disclose that in the March 19th meeting. That March 19th meeting is what led us here today and she did not disclose that again The citizens of Las Vegas are entitled to know who made that appeal and they're entitled to know who did not make the disclosure. Councilwoman Tarkanian today incorrectly and inaccurately and deceptively told you that her daughter is now a member of a board and that this happened after the March 19th meeting. In fact, Jody Diamanti, her daughter, also known as Jody Tarkanian, has been a member of the Board of Directors of the Rancho Circle Homeowners Association for some time now and was a member during the March 19th hearing. It was not disclosed then, it was disclosed today, but it was disclosed inaccurately. Jody Tarkanian has been a member of the Rancho Circle Homeowners Association for a very long time. Second of all, she did not disclose that her daughter was on a record in opposition to the variance planning commission. Her daughter had filed a postcard. It was part of the record, it was not disclosed. Next, Councilwoman failed to disclose that she had in her possession a petition. She disputes that she had the petition. The petition was part of the record, it has her daughter's name on it. Next, she failed to disclose, now keep in mind that at issue here is compliance with codes, compliance with the law, and specifically the March 19th issue was about heights and variations. Councilwoman Tarkanian didn't disclose to you that her daughter lives in a residence that's a two-story home when all of the deed restrictions require a one-story home.
Can we go, can we go to the overhead, please?
Given the topic of...
Just move, please.
Sorry.
Okay, can you show us the picture you got on the overhead right here, sir?
Yes, this is the main residence right here. You've got a swimming pool behind and accessory structure.
Is, is in reference to where Mrs. Tarkanian's daughter lives?
At 330 Rancho Circle.
And how close that is to the property that is being discussed here today?
It's approximately three properties away.
Thank you.
And given that the topic of discussion was about heights and variations and setbacks, I think it was appropriate that that be disclosed, that her daughter was actually in violation of covenants in every deed in Rancho Circle, which states you can only have a single story. Next, what was not disclosed is that her daughter has an accessory structure that violates the setbacks required in Rancho Circle. Right there, you can see an accessory structure that is built on the property line and in fact, its east wall is the wall of the property. Now, given that we were talking about setbacks and heights...
Excuse me, I can understand this, but this is not relevant to what we're here for today. We're, we're here about an order of nuisance and abatement.
Okay, so what I'm pointing out to you is that Lois Tarkanian, the councilwoman from my ward, did not accurately disclose her conflicts that she has in participating Okay, as, we'll, we'll have some further background that precedes the issues in the notice and order, but I will get into those as we go through the notice and order because I do believe that the notice of order is, was improper and it was a made in haste and it was politically motivated. And I think it's completely inappropriate to enforce certain codes and certain laws in Rancho Circle to some people and not enforce them to all the people. We can go through that one by one and again, there will be necessary to refer back to some history so it can be properly understood. This notice and order was served very quickly after my denial of the variance. It's irrelevant to this discussion. It was a matter of a few weeks and this notice was served on my property to correct. And this, this notice is one step short of a complete and outright condemnation of this property. It alleges dangerous buildings, it alleges vacant, vacant building, it requires mitigation plans. It was completely, it was a complete overkill to what is going on. And to understand what was going on in, on that property at the time this notice was served is that my co-trustee, Joseph Miller and I, after all of the improprieties that had happened, some of which I have not been given the opportunity to get into, decided to go ahead and fix up the house and put it up for sale and move in a tenant. And in the process of doing these things, many of the items were actually cleaned up before the notice was served, but we weren't even given a chance or given time. So going through them one by one, on the issue of refuse and waste, you have to remember, we were in the process of installing a concrete block wall. It was one that was permitted, it was one that was legal. The planning commissioner, Margot Wheeler, was not going to say it was legal.
Mr. Jackson, I, I need to interrupt again. Can you show us or submit a mitigation and rehabilitation plan on the buildings that we had, the problem why we're here today? That's all I'd like to hear.
I did not bring a mitigation plan because I'm appealing the actual order. That order's not effective as long as I have my rights of appeal. So no, I haven't brought a mitigation plan. I don't think that's, one is necessary.
Okay.
And Mayor Protem, Mr. Jackson, we're, we're going to follow the notice and order dated April 9, 2008?
That is correct.
Case 64136, are we going off the same?
Case 64136, yes.
So, on the refuse and waste issue, which is the first item in that order, we were in the process of installing a concrete wall. We were waiting to have approval of the variance so we could continue the concrete wall. Yes, we had crates and pallets of concrete block of the wall cladding we were going to put on and, and yes, some of them were covered with tarp. That's, that's what a construction site looks like. Of course, that was there. We were, we had a permit to build the original wall. We have a permit now to build additional walls. The, the assertion made earlier that we somehow need permits to do the construction we're doing, the only construction we're doing on the property has permits. There have been numerous complaints made with the building department. I have to go down to the building department quite often and every time I go down, they find in my favor because I do have valid permits and I do build according to code and I do build things properly and I ask permission before I do things. The irony here is what made the neighbors upset was that we built our wall before we built our house. We were building that wall to protect the neighbors from having to see the mess that is associated with construction. We are denied the opportunity to build that wall and to shield the neighbors from construction mess and then they go in and they make a complaint about our construction mess. The very reason we wanted to build a wall was to protect them from that. We understand that construction projects are completely, they're very messy. And if you look at the code in which I was cited on, it states that construction materials are allowed on a property as long as there is a building permit. I have a permit. I had a permit at the time the inspection was made and I have a building permit now. Other neighbors who are not cited for having construction refusals on their property were 701 Rancho Circle, 739 Rancho Circle, 745 Rancho Circle, 910 Rancho Circle, 1050 Rancho Circle, and the Rancho Circle Homeowners Association Community Well Association, all have construction debris and materials on their properties and has had for years, mine a matter of weeks from the time the denial of the wall was made and this notice of order made in haste was rushed and served on me. An interesting comment was made by Pam Hines when she served the notice of order. You beat me to it. By the time she served the notice and order, we had, we had completed most of the things we were in the process of completing. There was a dumpster on the property, old crates, old trash, old refuse had all been put away and Pam Hines applauded me for having done it. But I, I wasn't doing it because I was getting a notice and order. I was doing it because I was cleaning up my property as a property owner who is no longer going to build a residence and was going to instead lease out my home. Let's move on to issue number two, the weeds and the turf. The code reads, and I want to read this exactly.
Counsel, I, I know you want to stay focused on this and I just want to put on the record, the only thing that is before you today is the mitigation plan and the rehabilitation plan on this notice and order. The other items that are listed there, as Mr. Smith stated in his opening statement, have been corrected. So you obviously have the flexibility to listen to all of these issues about weeds and construction debris, et cetera, but according to Mr. Smith, and I'll let him speak for himself, but I spoke with him yesterday and this stuff has been cleaned up and taken care of. So the focus should be, of the presentation should be mitigation plan and rehabilitation plan. Obviously, if you want to hear about all these other extraneous matters, you've got the discretion to do that.
We certainly don't need to do that. I asked if we had a mitigation plan, he said no.
But that's the focus. He's, he can, he can argue why he doesn't, doesn't think he needs one and, you know, Mr. Smith or you can ask me questions and then you can make a decision as to whether or not he needs to produce one or not produce one under these circumstances.
Well, with all due respect, I, I am explaining to you why I don't think I need a mitigation plan. I just stated that I was in the process of leasing the home in the first place and as, I made this appeal. I asked to come before this, this body and the appeal I made was to appeal the notice of order in its entirety. You cannot hold against me now for having corrected problems by my own free will and limit my right to appear before this council and express my...
The city council certainly can limit the scope of the discussion if items in the notice and order have been corrected. You are wrong. They can, in fact, limit it to rehabilitation plan and mitigation plan if the other items have been corrected. And Mr. Smith has stated that this has already been repaired and corrected, so that's an incorrect statement, sir. I'm sorry.
Mayor and Counsel, if I may, I just wanted to reiterate what Mr. Still said. All the other items, the refuse waste, all that stuff has been cleaned up. All we're asking for under the vacant dangerous building under Title 16 is that he prepare and submit to us a mitigation plan, letting us know timelines and actions to be taken on the property so that we can be assured that we don't have... be taken on the property, so that we can be assured that we don't have a construction site that remains a construction site for a period of years. And we have that right under Title 16 to request him to submit a mitigation plan and would notify me of the intentions on the property, that he intends to complete it, sell it, demolish it, whatever he plans on doing, that he gets all the necessary permits for the work that he's doing, continue forward, to, like I said, bring this property into compliance, so we don't have a construction site over the next 10 years.
And I would ask our attorney, he has no plan, so what does that discuss here today?
We have the ability to order him to prepare a plan. It's a form. Neighborhood Services has a mitigation plan form and a rehabilitation plan form that he could complete. Typically, those are due within 30 days. The council could decide that, you know, he owes the city these plans so that we understand what his intentions are with the property, and you can put whatever timeline for delivery that you think is reasonable for those plans.
Well, I, I would like to make him-
Well, I would like to address the mitigation plan issue because-
Any comments or questions of the board at this time?
One, please.
Yes.
I just want to make sure procedurally I understand what's going on. The last meeting, Mr. Steed, was, was it March?
Nineteenth.
March 19th, and that's when the council upon motion granted the city's request, and technically, what did we do at that meeting?
Had a big fist bump.
Pardon me?
Had a big fist bump.
I mean technically, what was the, what was, upon the unanimous motion-
It was a denial of a variance request. I don't know what the nature of the variance request was, but it-
Okay, and then since then, you have filed this nuisance order, is that right?
What happened was, at some time between his appeal and the zoning and the whole thing, the property was in a state of disarray. There was all kinds of, there was a little travel trailer parked on there, on a, on a, I actually have some pictures if you-
Yeah, we have those pictures, actually.
Okay. Furniture had been placed outside. It wasn't just construction debris. There was a small travel trailer that was set on a trailer and it's parked in the front yard, the weeds, trash debris. So, we are a complaint-based, complaint-driven department. We get complaints, we go out, we address a complaint. At that point, we went out, saw the violations on the property, we issue a notice and order. A notice and order is basically just you need to correct these violations. If you don't correct-
And that's my point, is that's the only thing we're deciding right now, is this gentleman, Mr. Jackson's, appeal of, of that order, is that right?
Correct.
Everything else, I mean, I, I respect your abilities and what you're trying to do, but we are just here to hear the one limited, focused issue of your appeal of that nuisance order.
That's correct, and contained in those nuisance orders are the various violations, which were just brought up again, and I feel I should have a right to respond to them. So that's what's in this notice of order. The mitigate, I didn't appeal the mitigation plan, I appealed the notice of order. I don't think the notice of order was, was accurate, I don't think it was fair, and I'm asking the city council to dismiss the entire notice of order. If the notice of order is dismissed, no mitigation plan is necessary. The, whether a mitigation plan is necessary is not ripe for discussion of this board, because if you vote with me, it dismisses, if you vote against me, then the order goes into effect, and according to the notice, I then have the 15 days in order to comply. So while the city can vote and say, well, we're going to uphold the notice of order, and we're going to require a mitigation plan, that just puts the notice of order into effect, and then I have 15 days to comply with it. The mitigation plan is not ripe to be voted on.
Why was this, why was this order inaccurate?
I, I was in the process of telling you it was inaccurate, and, and I would like to, to complete it, I would like to go through each item in this notice of order.
That's all been taken care of.
Well, I spoke to Pam Hines last night by telephone, and she told me that she's still getting complaints about the weeds on the property, and in fact, he just brought up the weeds issue, and I would like to respond to that.
I, is there still weeds out there?
Most of the weeds have been, well, actually, all of the weeds have been corrected, and as we know, if you don't stay on top of them, they're gonna continue to grow back. At this point, we don't believe that they meet the eight-inch requirement by the city, but if they go to the eight, to 10-inch, to 12-inch, we will then again issue them another notice that he needs to correct the weed violation. At this point, everything has been brought into compliance, except for the one remaining notice of intent of the property of what he plans on doing and timelines he plans on completing it.
Yes. Counsel, explain procedurally for me. It's referenced in the backup that, in accordance with Chapter 1631, submit within 60 days mitigation and rehab plan. What triggers that in our code? The fact that we have issued a notice and order? Or can we go out to any vacant building that looks nice, but we're not sure what's happening, and ask for a mitigation and rehab plan?
Actually, either or. In this case, it arose out of the notice and order based upon their investigation of the underlying nuisance complaint. When they went out there, they discovered, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Smith, but discovered that the building was vacant, and then wanted to find out, you know, pursue it to 1631, what the intent of the owner was, and it's very common practice, I mean, this is something we, something we do regularly.
So, we issued a notice and order, and regardless of the debate on timing of it, Mr. Smith has indicated all those that are referenced in our April 9th correspondence have been mitigated.
Yes.
So we're past that. We stipulate that. Now we're being asked to address specifically a plan that needs to be submitted within 60 days.
Yes.
So-
No, I would address that because I haven't, I, you are correct, that the city had a right to serve me that notice of order, and timing is not relevant, but I have due process rights in relation to the procedural aspects that this city government operates on. And one of those due process rights is my right to appeal. And in that notice of order, it clearly states that I have a right to appeal to this council, the notice of order. I've exercised my right, and now I'm asking you to please let me be heard.
But you're, so I understand it. It's wonderful when we start talking legalese, but are you appealing the request of you to submit a plan, or are you appealing the original notice and order?
The original notice and order, and that's very clear.
And that's not intended, we were told that's not what we're considering.
The agenda reads it's an appeal of the notice of order.
We were instructed earlier, we're not, you may be right, but let's clarify for the record. I understand, no, I understand that, but if he's saying he doesn't even want to get to the mitigation plan because he's appealing the notice and order, even though he's taking care of the notice and order, legally, what do we, what do we-
Well, he hasn't taken care of the notice and order because part of the notice and order includes the mitigation and rehabilitation plan. It's in, it's contained within the notice and order. He's, he's completed all the other items in the notice and order.
Okay.
So that's the, should be the focus. That's what you've got to decide, let's put it that way. You can hear whatever you think is important.
His appeal then is for everything, it's not just those that he's finished and the one that he hasn't finished, he's appealing the original intent of the city to do that. Is that right, Mr. Jackson?
That is exactly correct, and I am very offended that there seems to be this subtle attempt to not let me be heard, and I think if you hear me out, again, please-
And I take offense at the subtle insinuations that you stepped up to the mic and started with the whole ethics and about my colleague who's not here to defend herself, so let's get that passed, let's get that passed us.
Then let's be heard.
And we still be heard specifically on what is being addressed now. So don't talk about subtle insinuations, that's just not fair, it's a two-way street.
I understand that. Now, I would like to continue talking about the notice of order, since that is what I appealed, if that-
And again, what you're talking about has already been taken care of.
And so you're going to hold against me as a good citizen of this, of Las Vegas, that I do my duty and I take care of things on my property and not-
All we have left is the cement plan.
Can I counsel, Mary?
No.
Let me, let me just suggest is if, if we were in court and you were the judge, the judge would say, I only want to hear things that are still at issue. And the things that have been corrected are no longer at issue. He gets no more protection here than he would in court, and the judge would not listen to anything he's saying other than the notice, other than the mitigation thing that's still at issue.
Understood?
Well, I'm going to address the mitigation issue, but I, again, put on record my objection that I'm not allowed my due process to address what I appealed and came before the council today. On the mitigation plan, it relates to the dangerous building citation and the vacant building citation. On the dangerous building, I spoke with Pam Hines, who is the supervisor and, who has been nothing but friendly in the resolution of this matter, as to why you would classify my building as dangerous. I was told that what made my building dangerous was a window that was open on the south side. That window is attached to the garage, and that is what made my building dangerous, and that is what is triggering a mitigation plan, which I believe is completely unnecessary, and that is what triggered this entire notice of order that was one step short of condemnation. An open window. It's approximately 24 inches by 18 inches, and it was open, and that was why my building was classified as dangerous. Now, I want to compare that to a situation and how it was handled by Neighborhood Services for some electrical cords that were draped across the roadway and into the guard shack by my neighbor to the south. That neighbor of a very dangerous situation, the draping of electrical cords across the property, was given seven days verbal notice to correct the problem, or she would be given a written citation. Where was the seven days' notice for me to simply close my window? I needed five minutes. So, when you say that this related to the mitigation plan hasn't been corrected, there hasn't been a mitigation plan, and again, I'm appealing the entire notice, and I'm saying a mitigation plan as part of this notice needs to be dismissed because my building is not dangerous. I have corrected that issue in the same way I've corrected the weeds issue. It took me all of five minutes, less than five minutes, to go in and close the window on the south part of my property.
Thank you, sir, just a second. Mr. Smith, you want to address that, please?
When we go out to a property, it's not necessarily just the open window. The term has come up before and before this council, attractive nuisance. When a property is left in disarray, open doors or windows, where a child or somebody could get inside and possibly cause harm to themselves, it could be an empty swimming pool, it could be a large hole in the yard that's not fenced off, any of those things, we would classify as an attractive nuisance. When we go out to a property and the building is not occupied and has no occupant living in it, it falls under the Title 16, which would go under vacant and abandoned buildings. Under that, this property was deemed to be an attractive nuisance, that's why the notice and order was issued. The window being open, broken, all that is, is if the window was broken, they need to secure it, if the door's open and accessible, it needs to be secured, whether they put new glass in it, whether they put bars over it, the window was not the only issue here. The whole property in itself was what the issue was.
And what was the other issue besides the window?
The trash, debris, the trailer on the property, the furniture outside, just numerous things, and just for the record, when, when this first started, we actually did contact him and give him notice of these things. When no corrective action is taken, at that point, that's when we issue the notice and order, so that it's on record and it's filed, and it comes before this council that there was a problem, if we have to end up going to mitigation, that was filed with the recorder's office, that the notice was given, so the legalities of what we do, when we go in and mitigate a property, we have followed all of our statutory requirements. So our first response is always to give somebody a correction notice, whether it's verbal, then it goes to a written correction notice, when they don't come into compliance, or we start getting resistance from that person, that's when we issue the notice and order, so that all of our legal bases are covered at such time if we need to move forward with a mitigation or an abatement of a property. So everything that we have done is common with our practice of how we do business.
So-
Mayor Proton, I'm just gonna lose it here in a minute. Partner, your property looks like crap, it needs cleaned up. Just clean it up, why are we even talking about this? No disrespect to you, but you're making the neighborhood look terrible. If you're working on it, build it, get it done. I'm a little familiar with construction sites, that's not a construction site, it's a dome. You need to clean it up, regardless of what the legalities are. Just do what the city's asking you to do, and get, get over with this.
With all due respect, Councilman Ross, as Mr. Smith told you, I have already cleaned up the property. And in response to Mr. Smith's allegation that they contacted me before serving the notice of order, that's not correct. The first time that Neighborhood Services contacted me was when they served the notice and order. There was not any verbal warning given whatsoever. And I note that Mr. Smith wants to tell you that the mitigation plan and the requiring that this is a dangerous building extends beyond the window, and what he cites when he says it extends beyond the window, he says it's all the other things in the notice of order. All those other things I'm not allowed to talk about, the furniture, which had been removed, the weeds, which have been removed, the trash, which has been removed. The property has been cleaned up, but you see, Neighborhood Services wants it both ways. They want to take the position that all the things that they've cited in the notice and order are what make this building dangerous, but then they don't want me to talk about anything but the mitigation plan. If, if, if the notice of order, if that dangerous building exceeds anything beyond that window, we're not talking bars, we're not talking broken glass, it was one window and it's been closed. If it goes beyond that, I'd like the, the opportunity to address it.
Mayor and counsel, if I may, the first conversation we had was with this gentleman, and that was on 4/2 of 2008. He advised the city was suing the city of Las Vegas, and that we needed to talk to Brad prior to issuing anything. We talked to Mr. Gerbik, and he advised us to move forward as we would with any other property, and at that point, because we saw the resistance that we were gonna have with this property, we did just like we would with any other property, issue a notice and order to correct violations. So the first conversation we had was controversial to begin with, on the second, when he told Pam Hines and my senior officer that he was gonna sue the city. So we got legal counsel, we asked Mr. Gerbik what our procedure should be, if there was any special circumstances that we should know about, he said to move forward as we would with any other property.
Okay, I, I'll even say, ask you, Mr. Smith, is, on this recent metal plan, is there anything else to that bill? He's, he's got everything else taken care of, according to you?
Correct, and we're gonna ask him to continue to keep the property and-
Okay, so, all we need then is, is there anything else to the building? That's, everything else been cleaned up? So with the building that we have out there, what else does he need to do to bring that into confirmation?
Just submit a letter of intent to, to my department that we would approve, so we know going forward what his intent is with the property, and to complete the project, you know, with all the necessary permits, with whatever's gonna be done to that property, we need to know and what type of timelines we need to know about.
My, my, I'm gonna make a motion that we follow that recommendation, that we ask Mr. Jackson to bring back to the city on the 18th this cement plan, so we put it on file with Mr. Smith. Are there any questions on the motion? Hang on, please catch your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
And just for the record, I've got a copy of everything he needs to submit right here, so I'll go ahead and give it to him, so he doesn't need to-
And just for the record, the house has been leased, it has a tenant in it, and it's, everything is fine.
Put that on there and bring it here, bring it back.
All right, item 20. Item 29 is a public hearing to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for mitigation, abatement of vacant or abandoned building located at 1307 South 17th Street. The property owner is Misty D. Born, and this is in Ward 3.
Again, Mayor and Counsel, Devin Smith, manager of Neighborhood Response. The condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Services declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Neighborhood Services hired Disaster Cleanup of Nevada to repair or replace roof covering in the damaged area, fire-damaged roof structure, install screening over all windows that were boarded, protective covering requires all doors and windows, security bars over all windows, security doors over all doors, remove refuse, waste, trash, debris, litter, to include all leaves, paper, wood, plastic, et cetera, vegetation, and graffiti. To date, there have been 12 inspections conducted at this location. The value of the property, based on the sale date of 2005, was $192,000. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses in the amount of $7,270.63, and that the above charges be filed and recorded against the property, constituting a special assessment and lien, and authorize that the notice and lien of assessment be duly recorded with the county director.
Any questions to Mr. Smith? It's the property owner, Misty D. Born, here. All right, it's a public hearing, folks, it's now open.
John McGowan, Las Vegas resident, thank you for the opportunity to speak to this item, with reference very briefly to the previous item.
No, no, this item.
Well, this item is in order, the previous item wasn't.
Well, have a seat, please.
Well, I should say to my council, that's unlawful, unlawful, period.
Please have a seat.
You got three terms on that, I could point at you.
Please have a seat.
Yeah, it's okay.
Would anyone else like to speak on this item? All right, seeing that, we'll close the public hearing. Mayor Proton.
I'm going to follow such a recommendation with all conditions, please.
All right, let's vote. Post. Motion carries, thank you. Item 30 is public hearing to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance and assess civil penalties located at 8801 Buffalo Cloud Avenue. The property owner is Leonel E. Hargrove, in the amount of $6,963.55. It's in Ward 6, public hearing, which is now open, yes, sir?
Again, Mayor and Counsel, Devin Smith, manager of Neighborhood Response. The purpose and background is that the condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Services declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Neighborhood Services- Services hired CW Enterprises to fill in a large hole in the rear yard, remove the refuse, waste, dead, dry, overgrown vegetation, including the palm trees, and repair the damaged wall and gate. To date, there have been nine inspections conducted at this location. The value of the property based on the sale date of September 2006 was $777,700. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the report of expenses in the amount of $6,963.55 for work completed by CW Enterprises.
All right, any questions of Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith, it looks like somebody just walked away from this property.
Actually, the complaint came from a surround, there is a tenant in the property, not the owner. It is a leased property, and the complaint came because there was a large swimming pool that had been started in the backyard, never completed, the permits had expired, and the gate was open and accessible, and the neighbors were concerned about, you know, possibly children getting in the background, the dirt collapsing on them and possibly hurting somebody.
All right, is the owner here, Mr. Hargrove? All right, public hearing.
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. As you're probably aware by now, the issue of vacant and buildings of this troublesome type is not only citywide, but it's countywide. It's endemic and epidemic. I strongly recommend a policy of zero tolerance. Really, all property owners are negligent, not just this one, but all. And it is the duty of this City Council to protect the public health and safety and well-being. You can start anytime. I recommend you start soon. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to be heard? All right, seeing that, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Your Honor. Is that a four-car garage?
It is.
That is a beautiful house. What a, it's just tragic. Did the city finish the pool?
You know, we went over and looked at it, and I would love to have all those garages. I've got plenty of toilets I'd like to park in there.
That is an absolutely great property.
It is.
It is just heartbreaking to see that fall into that kind of disrepairing. Good for the neighbors for calling, concerns about their children. I think the, you've done a great job in cleaning that up for the owner, and I think the owner needs to be prepared to do what needs to be done. Your Honor, I'm going to follow staff's recommendation.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 31 is a public hearing to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance and assess civil penalties located at 5205 Still Breeze Avenue. The property owner is Michael Castellana, and this is in Ward 6. It's a public hearing, which I now declare open.
Again, Mayor and Council, Devin Smith, manager of Neighborhood Response. The purpose and background is that the condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Services declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Neighborhood Services hired CH Construction LLC to remove all dead vegetation, including dead trees and bushes. To date, there have been five inspections conducted at this location. The value of the property based on the sale date of July 1999 was $185,990. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the report of expenses in the amount of $1,824.35 for work completed by CH Construction LLC.
Thank you. Any questions to Mr. Smith? All right, is the property owner here, Michael Castellana? Public hearing, does anyone wish to be heard?
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. Same recommendation as previously, zero tolerance, coupled with an additional recommendation and request on the public record. I would like to see the city's mitigation plan for once of these kind of properties with neglectful owners. I want the city to go on record with what you will do in a timely and prompt manner to address and resolve these issues once and for all, instead of just leaving it up to very capable David Smith five or six times. Why wasn't the first time enough? Whereas the City Council's action in the public interest, that's what I want to see on this and all similar items. Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard?
My name is Howard 123 Sir David. I'm on my way out of town Thursday night, but I came here for two historical things today. One of them, Mr. Barlow, and that presidential dude that just got appointed by him and Hillary, that's, the two of them contacted me, so I need to tell you all. But that's not the point. Now, it is, this kind of private window is abandoned. It is a public nuisance, and the people who walk away from this valuable property does leave it where you have bandeliers, all kinds of people living in it, and it become, it can become very dangerous to everybody. And the city shouldn't be the one that have to be taking, so you cleans it up, but if the neighbors need to get together, keep it clean too, because anything that looks abandoned becomes a real dangerous hazard. And you have all kinds of people nowadays doing all kinds of things, gangs, drugs, whatever. These people look for these places as havens, and they're coming in the middle of the night, and they stay there and move in. And what I'm trying to say, these things are dangerous, so when you clean it up, at least you give it some, 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 some public decency far as a human eye can see. So, this is a pretty bad situation, but the city shouldn't be all beat up because you're cleaning it up. I mean, go up to these owners, and that's the name of the whole game. I'm sorry.
Anybody else like to be heard? All right, seeing that, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Ross.
Thank you again, Your Honor. Mr. Smith, thank you very much. Last time I checked, you worked for the city. Am I correct?
I do, yes.
Great. Once again, another great property and a great neighborhood. It's unfortunate that it's fallen into that kind of repair. I appreciate your steadfastness. I anticipate throughout the city, we'll see more of these, and I think the time has come when true investors will again start reinvesting in this city, especially where the home prices are today. So, good, good work. And, Your Honor, I would move to follow staff's recommendation.
Very good. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Have a great remainder of your day.
You're welcome. We're going to go to item number 32. Item 32, thank you. Discussion on possible action regarding the termination of ground lease and development agreement with option to purchase for 601 Fremont Street between the city of Las Vegas and 601 Fremont LLC. This is in Ward 5. Mr. Adams.
Good morning. Scott Adams, Director of the Office of Business Development. This item respects the termination of an agreement that we entered into in July of '05, respecting development of, leasing development of a property we own as 601 Fremont Street. I have on the overhead, the location of the property, it's in the heart of the entertainment district with funny John Fremont Street. We found ourselves in a situation with the, the party that we leased to where, under the original agreement, they made the property ready, construction ready, to accept an entertainment use in the building. And then in a second amendment to that agreement, we enhanced their performance requirements to require that that property be open and operating with entertainment use. The developer who had the property in release has found themselves in a trying situation as they're predominantly a housing developer, and their focus is in the Florida markets. They found themselves in a situation where they've had to focus their line of business on working out a number of problem situations in the Florida market. And there are, we, bottom line is, we've reached a friendly termination of this agreement. The terms of that are embodied in a determination agreement that we're asking you to approve. It does a number of things. It, they forfeit the deposits that they put up on this property, which total $480,000. And they release us from any liability that they might have incurred during their tenancy during this lease period. They did have the property under sublease with a potential tenant that was struggling to bring a club under operation. There was one initial effort that failed, and they've tried again. They have since released that tenant, and so we'll, we will take the property back free and clear of any subtenancy. They are providing us a release and indemnification from any liens that might have occurred during their period of occupancy. That was very, very important because they did some construction work on site. I think, and I don't have these pictures, but if you remember from this morning's RDA presentation, I showed you that there was a shelled-out condition that they made the property ready to, that they incurred considerable construction expense to do, and we do have concerns that there, there may be unpaid bills that might result in liens that we, they're indemnifying us on. So, this agreement covers all the issues that we believe would provide any kind of liability to us and the termination of our agreement with this developer. Now, moving forward from here on, we, just as a side note, indicate that we will be very, very careful as we move forward in vetting out interest on this property. We have already had several developers or groups come forward expressing interest in developing this property, either using the building or tearing the building down and developing the property in a new use. We're going to aggressively market the availability of this space and property to potential developers or occupants, receive all those proposals, and then evaluate those, and then come back with you with what we believe to be the best recommended approach for how we proceed with development of the site. Given its strategic location in the heart of the entertainment district, we believe whatever happens here should become a catalyst or anchor and draw people into the area and contribute to the vitality of the, of the district. So, with all those considerations, staff does recommend approval of the termination agreement as presented.
Very good. Any questions of Mr. Adams? Yes.
Are we going to put out an RFP on this location?
We, we are hesitating to issue an RFP. We, we're going to do something like an RFP process, and the reason I say no, and I will do whatever you, you direct us to do.
I just wanted to correct, in my briefing yesterday, I, I had this property confused with another. There's, there are some people that have businesses already, and they belong with the downtown businesses, business group. They, they got some, they're about to come in here and do something at this location.
Yes, and we, we have been in contact with them, and they have already...
Mr. Mastman?
Yes, and they've already tendered a proposal. So, what, the reason why we're not using RFP is that the building's ready for tenants. He saw in those photos that it's shelled out and ready to go. If a Starbucks or a major retail tenant wanted to move in, they could, but they don't respond to RFPs. I mean, if we put an RFP out, we won't get a retail tenant to respond to an RFP. They don't work that way. So, what we'll get are developers or groups who want to use the property or develop it in some way. So, we're going to do something like that kind of a process. We're, I assure you, we'll get a whole range of interest. We already have four interested groups in the property, and we'll just keep advertising its availability, keep receiving those, and then possibly inform a committee to evaluate and handle this, just like a standard RFP. But that leaves open the opportunity for retail tenants to come in and, and, and lease the property, which they wouldn't do under an RFP process.
Very good. Councilman Wilson.
Scott, could you point with a pen to where Fremont Street is and where 601 East Fremont is?
This is Fremont Street. By reference, this is Fremont Square in Neapolis. This is the red garage. The district, the entertainment district, runs from 8th to Las Vegas Boulevard, and this, this is the subject property. And by reference, this is the El Cortez complex, which is immediately across the street.
My point is, the 601 East Fremont, the property we're talking about, is that entire rectangle that goes from Fremont Street south?
Yes, it goes all the way through the block, and it comprises about 1.2 acres. It comprises a building that used to be, I guess years ago, predates me, an old department store building, and then was used by Metro after that. And then behind it, there's a parking lot that's part of the property. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions of Mr. Adams?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Barlow.
Mr. Adams, thank you for the update. I'm saddened to see that the previous developer had to fold up its shop because it most definitely would have been an attractive amenity to Fremont Street. But moving forward, the, the four individuals or the four possibilities of tenants that you've mentioned, are one of them the representatives from the bunkhouse?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Because I know they've met with my staff and, and left some information for me to oversee, so I want to make sure that that information had been transferred to your office.
We have had several others, and two of those, we've had verbal representations of, of what they'd like to do and intend to submit. And due to confidentiality, they, you know, until they submit, I, I'm reluctant to talk about those, but they're very exciting proposals. So, we're, we expect to get a lot of interest. And, and you know, if you look at it, we, we really entered into this agreement, you know, in '05, when, when the entertainment district was in its infancy. And now that it's, it's matured a bit, I think we're going to see substantially enhanced interest over what we had previously. And, and so we're going to be very careful this time. I think we want to make sure we enter into something where the group that we entered into will actually perform, will get it done, and get it open, and, and contribute to the district.
Okay. And I, and I support your efforts in that fact. And so, Mayor, I'm not sure if it's open for discussion.
It's not a public hearing, but I see a gentleman standing there who's been so nice today that I, I think that if he wants to talk, I'll let him talk.
Okay.
You don't have to be nice.
Well, I've explained to him what you mean by nice. Tell him what nice is. If I get me nicer, I'll throw up. If I really speak my mind, you wouldn't want to hear it.
Yes, please identify yourself for the record.
Tom McGowan, still Las Vegas resident. First of all, a commendation to one of your members. His name is Stephen Ross, and he went the extra mile.
No, I appreciate that, but it's...
Well, it's...
Councilor Ross would love to hear that, but...
Well, we'll tell him that some other, some other...
Glad to tell him about the...
All right. Back to the issue at that hand. Now, to digress from your meeting agenda, so scuppedly prepared, the Director of OBD made reference to four lively proposals currently. I, I would, I would say that there are five. I'm the fifth. He forgot to also mention other things, whether the rent terms on that property will be adjusted in any way favorable to development, also whether or not a sound wall will be required at the tenant's investment expense. And also, if you want to know how to really develop the entertainment district, you've got to get a hold of the entertainment. You're talking to one right now. Anytime you're ready, I'll explain to you how to do that, and it will be an immediate overwhelming hit, regardless of who is the Director of OBD or the expert staff people, and regardless of what they have put into the sidewalk in the way of fun-filled medallions at the cost of $7,000 apiece. Anytime you want to make recompense the city for that expense, go right ahead and do it. But the important thing is, 601 Fremont and the rest of Fremont is readily developable and could be a major asset to the city. But you need to open your mind and your heart and talk to the people whom you may not think are nice enough to you about how to do it, because it's very simple. Thank you.
All right, Councilman, I'm ready for my motion.
Can I at least have one?
No, I made one mistake. I'm not going to repeat it.
I'll go along with that.
Thank you, Mayor. And just for the record, Mr. Adams, before, before I make my motion, the amount of money that was put down on this site, for the record, what was the amount?
At the time, we had, this is both a lease and development agreement that gave them a purchase option, right? So, we had a deposit that was equal to 10% of then-value of the property, which is 4.8 million. So, we have a collected deposit of $480,000 that they'll be refunding. They've already put that $480,000 up. It's in an escrow account, and part of this motion, that's part of the action today, is to keep that money in the, in the, with this project so that we can use that to operate the facility in the interim period until we find a new proposer and get, enter into an interim agreement. And we may actually have to go into the site and make certain improvements on an interim basis to bring certain things up to code, or make tenant improvements as part of, of what we do as well. So, the, the deposit, though, was $480,000 that they'll be forfeiting under this agreement.
Okay. And also, with the previous developer moving in and doing the tenant improvements, how much would you say has been put into this location as far as a, an amount?
Well, they, what they did was demolish the entire ground floor, they sheet rocked and demised the premise. It's about 14,000 square feet into spaces of 8,000 and 6,000 square feet. They did fire sprinkling, they did some... They did some electrical panel work. We estimate somewhere around $200,000 of work that they had put into the building to make it construction-ready for a potential tenant. Now, there's still work. We had some of our own folks go in and inspect the building. There's still a lot of things left to be done, but it's in a position where somebody could come right in and keep right on going with tenant improvements and make it ready for occupancy.
So, in essence, we're receiving a building now worth approximately, as far as at, well, equity, 680,000?
Of additional benefit as a result of their termination under this agreement.
Okay, so, not a bad deal for the termination. With that, Mayor and Council, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
All right, let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Item 35 is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of change of ownership for a beer/wine cooler on-sale license from DST Enterprises to Jack Young LLC, doing business as Royal Thai at 3839 West Sahara Avenue in Suite 9. This is in Ward 1. Yes, sir. Please identify yourself for the record.
Yes, I'm Jack Young.
All right.
Mayor, members of council, Carol Meyer, Finance and Business Services. The applicant that we have before you today has met our criteria for consideration of a temporary approval of a beer/wine cooler on-sale license, and my recommendation would be approval, subject to all conditions.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions, Ms. Meyer? Would you like to be heard, sir?
I'm sorry?
Would you like to be heard? Would you like to say anything to us?
I would like to say, "Thank you."
Well, not yet, but we'll take that in the spirit of which it's intended. Do you want to tell us about any kind of special food that you serve there?
Yes, sir. We do authentic Thai food, and we don't use MSG in cooking.
Very good.
I was going to kitchen when I was 10 years old.
Hey, I live right around that area, so now that you are able to serve things I like after this vote, I'll be there. All right. No, don't worry about it. That counts, woman.
Move to approve with all conditions.
Okay, let's vote. Post? Motion carries. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. 37 is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of change of location, change of business name, and change of ownership for a pawn broker license from Candace Limon, doing business as M&amp;M Pawn at 3227 Mead Avenue, Suite 3B, to BDL Investments LLC, doing business as Metro Pawn at 7960 West Sahara Avenue in Suite 120. This is in Ward 2. Ms. Meyer.
Mayor, members of council, Carol Meyer, Finance and Business Services. The applicants we have for this application have met our criteria for consideration of approval of a temporary pawn license, and it would be my recommendation to approve, subject to all conditions.
All right, very good.
I'm sorry. For the record, I recused myself last time when this matter came before the council because of certain opposition to this application, and I am friends with some business owners that are right across the street, very good friends. My family's done business with these people for many, many years, and just out of fairness to all, I decided to recuse myself last time, and I will be accusing myself this time.
All right, thank you. I'm going to read item 38 into the record, too. It's a related item, discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a new pistol permit and a new Class II secondhand dealer license, BDL Investments LLC, doing business as Metro Pawn at 7960 West Sahara Avenue in Ward 2.
Just to be careful, my comments should apply to this item as well.
All right, would you like to be heard, sir?
Mayor, my name is Martin Limon Henderson. I'm one of the applicants, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
All right, very good. Would you like to be heard, Mayor? Okay, all right. No questions, so we'll hear from the mayor for ten.
Yes, Your Honor, on this item 38, this new pistol permit, would you care to explain that to us, please?
We, when we got the SUP for the location, we were approved with being able to take firearms in on pawn and our ability to then transfer them to a different location in the Reno area. My understanding is that we would need the permit to be able to do anything with any firearms that aren't redeemed.
Are there any questions on item 38?
Yes, Mayor Protem. Just for clarification, because I'm not quite sure on what he stated or what we're voting on here today with item 38 as relates to pistol permit. If, I just need a little bit more clarity in that respect.
What they actually put on their application was that they would, with their pistol permit, they could take firearms in, but they could not sell them from that location. They would only be sold through someone that has an FFL license and has the authority to sell those, and as he stated, they're only going to be sold in the Reno area. They're not going to be sold in the Las Vegas area at all.
Correct. One of the things we will be doing is transferring any expired firearms that fall out of pawn to Reno and be sold from there.
So, there absolutely will be no firearms sold from this location?
There will be none sold to the public. They will only be transferred to another FFL dealer. Correct.
All right.
One more question.
Yes.
Why is it a new pistol permit?
They have to have that to be able to take them in.
Okay.
Okay. Mayor Protem, do you have a motion?
Yes, on item 37, I make a motion for approval with all conditions.
Let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries, and 38, please.
Yes, I make a motion for approval with all conditions with that one. No firearms sold at this location in big, bold letters.
On their license.
All right, very good.
Before we vote on that, Mayor Protem, Mayor, if you don't mind, that is a condition as far as this particular location? This is his location?
Yes.
Because I'm just, what about future tenants? They would have to transfer. Should they sell at a future date or at a later date? Come back in and apply for it? How does that work?
If they should happen to sell or whatever, they're going to have to come back in here and transfer the license. We will, at that time, be able to invoke the same condition that we have today.
Okay, thank you.
All right, there's been a motion. Let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck. Item 39 is discussion and possible action regarding six-month review of temporary approval of a tavern license for Fidelcio Garcia, doing business as Aldo's de Oro's Bar and Nightclub at 1203 East Charleston Boulevard, Suite G through J. This is in Ward 3. Mr. DeFiori.
Mayor, members of the council, this item is back for a six-month review, and I'd like to report to the council that during this time, there were 13 calls for service at this location. Most of the calls for service had to do with patrons, disturbances, person with a gun, suspicious vehicle, not necessarily totally related to the operations of the business. I will say this, there were three incidents that took place that the licensee and the security took due diligence in notifying Metro and the removal of patrons that were intoxicated to a point where they were possibly drunk and would have caused a little bit of disorder. My suggestion, though, to Mr. Garcia is that his bartenders and bar waitresses maybe should exercise a little bit more caution when they serve drinks, and they're required under the Alcohol Anonymous, I'm sorry, Alcohol Awareness Program to identify those individuals who are intoxicated and not serve them anymore drinks. So, that would be one suggestion to him as we move forward here. During the last six-month period, they had conditions that were placed on the license, and I'll read those into the record because I'm going to recommend that the conditions remain in place until we have our next review. Those conditions would be to include that Claudio Garcia shall not have any role in the business operation as an employee, manager, or otherwise. Condition two would be the licensee must have presence on-site during peak hours, 8:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., unless the business closes earlier. Number three, all employees must maintain in their possession work cards, health cards, and alcohol awareness cards at all times while they are working. Item four, condition four, would be violations of the conditions shall result in an immediate suspension of the tavern license until review of the licenses scheduled at the next available city council meeting. And the fifth condition would be a six-month review scheduled for December 3, 2008. He is doing a good job down there. I'd like to suggest that he continue to make progress on this, and just as a caution, make sure your bartenders and waitresses exercise control over the patrons and their intoxication.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Mr. DeFiori, you mentioned Carlos Garcia?
Claudio Garcia.
Claudio. Has he been involved in this at all?
Not that we have found during our inspection time and not that it has been reported to Metro.
Jay Brown, 520 South Fourth Street, representing the applicant. The applicant is also present, and he understands the conditions being reiterated today and also the new request about his bartender and his intent to follow that. Very good, thank you. All right, Mayor Protem?
Yes, I'd move to follow staff's recommendation with all conditions, please.
All right, let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Good luck to you, sir. You're welcome. Item 40 is discussion and possible action regarding a review of temporary approval of a beer/wine cooler on-sale license for Admistka Inc., doing business as La Cabana Mexican Restaurant at 526 South Martin L. King Boulevard in Ward 5. And a companion, item 41, discussion and possible action regarding six-month review of temporary approval of a tavern license and a restricted gaming license for 15 slots for Admistka Inc., doing business as Paradise Lounge at 350 South Martin L. King Boulevard in Ward 5. Mr. DeFiori.
Mayor, members of the council, on the first item, La Cabana Mexican Restaurant, there were only three calls for service during the last six-month period, not of significance for us to consider anything relative to the business operation. We did find, however, that he did have on his menus the margaritas to be sold as part of the meals to be being sold to patrons. Margaritas mixed with tequila are not allowed under the license that he has here, beer/wine on-sale license. We took efforts to bring this to his attention, and he had them removed from his menu, and hopefully he will not be serving any hard alcohol under this particular license. I would like to suggest to the city council that we have a review of this license to monitor the progress here on November 19, 2008. So, that would be my recommendation.
Any questions of Mr. DeFiori? All right, folks, would you like to be heard? Please identify yourself.
William Jacobs.
Good morning, Adena Jacobs.
We're okay with that. We have complied with everything they've told us, and we can have another review. That's not a problem.
Okay, in my youth, I think I knew people who made margaritas with wine.
Yes, we're looking into that. We are talking with our different vendors right now to see the wine-based margaritas, yes.
So, I just want you to know that you're not completely out of the woods here, all right?
Thank you for the advice.
Okay, and you had a nice write-up in the, one of the local papers, I believe. What do you do, open up for breakfast at 9:00 in the morning?
We open at 10:00 in the morning, usually at noon. We are full. We have people from the city. We have people from the hospital, you know, different entities that come, and we have diverse crowds. In the afternoon, we have a lot of Hispanic people come, and yes, we did get a review, a nice review from The View, and we're very happy. It actually helped us bring some people in.
Good. When do you open up on Sunday morning?
We open at 10:00.
10:00 with a wine margarita? Terrific, okay.
(laughing)
Okay. Catherine Barlow?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Jacobs, thank you for working with our business license in respect to the margaritas that were on your menu, as you are very, very well aware of that this particular strip center has had some previous issues and problems. So, I really hope that this issue that we have to deal with as regards to liquor inside of the restaurant has been addressed and that we're able to move forward.
Yes, sir. Just to make, you know, for the record, we had two surprise inspections at La Cabana, and there was no tequila there. You know, I mean, we, they came twice. They had requested more than anything else that the margaritas were put under the alcohol, so they were assuming that, you know, we were serving alcohol there. But, again, for the record, they came in twice, and they checked absolutely every, you know, drawer, everything in La Cabana, and there was absolutely no liquor on promise.
Okay, and it's only because we're trying to make sure that we clean up this particular area?
I understand, sir.
And so, we need your assistance with that?
Yes, sir.
And you and I have had an opportunity to sit down and speak for quite a long time during one of my briefings, and we covered that. So, I want to make sure that we get started on the right foot, and I look forward to coming and patronizing your establishment once everything is off and rolling. So, with that, I would move to follow staff's recommendation with a five-month review, subject to all staff conditions for approval.
All right, that's on item 40. Let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries, and 41, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, on 41, I do have some comments that I would like to put on the record.
Sure.
Okay. There are some conditions that are on this license that, over the last six months, Mr. Jacobs has complied with, and I'd like to recommend that these conditions remain on the license until we have a next review. The first one is condition one, Paradise Lounge will provide and maintain adequate security for protection of patrons inside and outside the bar, limited to the parking area designated for the Paradise Lounge. Condition number two would be the owners will provide hands-on management, and condition number three would be a review by council on November 19, 2008. I would like to commend Mr. Jacobs. He has complied with those conditions in the last six months. Calls for service were nine over the last six months. If you recall, when the operation was Squiggy's or known as Squiggy's, we had probably 100 calls for service over a six-month period, so I think he has done a good job in trying to keep this a very good business for people to patronize, and would like to just suggest that he continue to do so, and we have the review in November to consider the permanent license on this business.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, just for the record, out of those nine, seven of those calls were related to a false alarm. We had some faulty wires there because the alarm system we had was 30 years old, I guess. So, sometimes during the day, two or three times, the alarm would trigger. We got that resolved. We called an ET and put a new system in.
Right, thank you. All right, Catherine Barlow?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Jacobs, and you agree to all of the conditions that Mr. DeFiori from our business license department has spoken to the record?
Absolutely.
And you agree to those conditions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so with that, Mayor, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation with a five-month review and conditions as stated by Mr. DeFiori.
Very good. Let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Item 42 is discussion and possible action regarding a review of a tavern license for Las Vegas Libations LLC, doing business as LJ's Bar and Grill at 1243 Isahara Avenue in Ward 3. Mr. DeFiori.
Mayor, members of the council, the applicant today appears for the review. During the last six months, there have been no violations found during the inspections of the premises here. Additionally, since January 1, calls for service have totaled seven, and all those were disturbances, and do not raise to the level to cause concern for us on his business operation, and my recommendation today would be to have the council consider approval of the permanent license for this location.
Find any questions of Mr. DeFiori? Sir, would you please identify yourself?
Sure, Mayor. Lance Johns, 6725 Via Osti Parkway. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Very good. Any questions of the gentleman? All right, seeing none, Mayor Protem.
Good job.
Thank you.
I'd move to follow staff's recommendation, all conditions.
Let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Good luck. Okay, we're going to 44. 44 is appointment to the Park and Recreation Advisory Commission for the term of John Lowenstein, which expires 2009. However, he resigned, and based on the, we've had some very good applications, folks who have expressed interest. There's one gentleman who's a businessman in the community. I spoke with Councilwoman Tarkanian. She felt that it was appropriate for somebody with that kind of background to be serving in that capacity, so at this time, I would move to appoint Andy Armenian. Can we vote on that, please? Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 45 is bill number 2008-25, eliminates the requirement that a general business-related gaming establishment licensed to sell alcoholic beverages obtain a separate special-use permit for gaming use. Councilwoman, do you wish to add the bill read?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Bill number 2008-25... Bill number two thousand eight dash twenty-five, an ordinance to eliminate the requirement that a general business-related gaming establishment licensed to sell alcoholic beverages obtain a separate special use permit for the gaming use and to provide for other related matters. As we indicated last meeting, this came out of the recommending committee with no recommendation. We pointed out that subsequent to the committee meeting, we identified some clarifying language that we needed to put in the bill to indicate that when the use comes forward for its only special use permit hearing, that the council retains the right to impose a condition restricting the number of slot machines in connection with that special use permit for alcoholic beverages, and that is before you in the backup as the proposed First Amendment.
Fine. Have you read the bill? Did you read it?
Yes.
All right, Councilwoman, do you have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Let's vote, please.
That says the First Amendment?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that's the motion. Please vote. Close. Motion carries, thank you. Item forty-six is bill number two thousand eight dash twenty-six, annexation number ANX two-three-one-oh-three, property located within the area bounded by Witch Mountain Road on the west, Moccasin Road on the north, Schaumburg Road on the east, and Iron Mountain Road on the south, approximately six hundred and five acres. Councilwoman, do you wish to have a read?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Bill number two thousand eight dash twenty-six, an ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city, to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its inhabitants subject to law's obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
And Councilwoman, do you have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Let's vote. Close. Motion carries, thank you. Items forty-seven through forty-nine, which are bills two thousand eight dash seventeen, two thousand eight dash twenty, and two thousand eight dash twenty-seven, are eligible for adoption at a later meeting, so we're going to move on to new bills. New bill item fifty, bill two thousand eight dash twenty-eight, will be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Tuesday, June seventeenth, two thousand eight. Would you be kind enough to read that, please?
Yes. Bill number two thousand eight dash twenty-eight, an ordinance creating City of Las Vegas, Nevada's Special Improvement District, number fifteen-eleven, Farm Road, Virginia Dale Street to Two-Springs Road, describing details in connection therewith and other matters relating thereto.
Very good, thank you. And Councilwoman, will you be available on June seventeenth?
Yes.
And Councilor Barlow, will you be available, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, and that bill will be signed to you. And the council meeting is in recess until one o'clock. I will advise everybody that, based on the calendar, I think we'll probably be getting to citizens' participation as early as two. Forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, your honor. We have item number sixty-six, is a special use permit twenty-three, two-eight-five, Metro PCS Nevada LLC slash DNW Inc., between North Jones Boulevard. Definitely request that to be held in a basis till our June eighteenth, two thousand eight meeting. Item number seventy is a special use permit twenty-five, two-fifty-nine, Fiesta Discount Market, Donald S. Gilde, revocable family trust, seventy-ten West Charleston Boulevard. Definitely withdrawn that, withdraw for the appeal. Seventy-five is a special use permit twenty-seven oh forty-eight, Hit W. Douglas Family Trust, five-point-one acres out the northwest corner of Durangle Drive and Deer Springs Way. They withdrawn without prejudice this item. Councilmembers, are there any other items? Are there any other items we need to bring forward at this time? Hearing none, your honor, make a motion to bring these items forward, take support action, please.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Close. Motion carries, thank you. Items fifty-two through fifty-seven are on the consent agenda. They're considered to be routine. They're recommended for approval by the Department of Planning and Development. They have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items fifty-two through fifty-seven.
Certainly, your honor. No questions or comments on these items, make a motion for approval, all conditions, please.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Close. Motion carries, thank you.
We did want our votes taken.
All right, thank you. Items fifty-eight through sixty-three may be considered in one motion, one vote. They're considered routine public hearing items with no condition changes. All public hearings will be opened at one time, and any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. I now declare items fifty-eight. Okay. Items fifty-eight through sixty-three are public hearings. I now declare them open. I'll read the other items in and then we'll hear fifty-eight. Fifty-nine is VAC two-seven-four-four-seven. The applicant owner is Hotspur Resorts Nevada LTD, petition to vacate an ingress/exit right-of-way generally located three hundred and forty feet north of the northwest corner of Rampart Boulevard and Canyon Run Drive in Ward Two. Sixty is SUP two-seven-five-oh-five, special use permit. The applicant owner is Stewart and Nellis Partners LLC, request for special use permit for a proposed beer wine cooler off-sale establishment within approved sixteen thousand two-hundred-and-six square-foot grocery store at three-seventeen North Nellis Boulevard in Ward Three. Sixty-one is SUP two-seven-five-oh-six, special use permit. The applicant owner is Ficino Labberera Sahara LLC, request for special use permit for a proposed beer wine cooler off-sale establishment within an approved seventeen thousand three-hundred-and-seven square-foot grocery store located at fourteen, located forty-five-eighty West Sahara Avenue in Ward One. Sixty-two is SUP two-seven-five-three-six, special use permit. The applicant is Chipotle Mexican Grill. The owner is Rock Springs Plaza Investment LLC, request for special use permit for a proposed service bar at an existing restaurant with a waiver to allow a three-hundred-and-thirty-nine foot distance separation from a school where four hundred feet is required at seventy-one-seventy-five West Lake Mead Boulevard Suite Number one-oh-five in Ward One. Sixty-three is SDR two-seven-four-four-nine, site development plan review. The applicant owner is Kurt and Deborah Michaj Blanca, request for a site development plan review for a proposed parking lot with the existing house to remain vacant and a waiver to allow a five-foot landscape buffer along the east property line where eight feet is required on point-five-three acres at forty-three-oh-nine Tom Boulevard. That's in Ward Six. Is there any, as I said, I'll call fifty-eight, but I'll take care of the others. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on items, let's say fifty-nine through sixty-three at this time? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close. Did you want to be heard on any of those items?
Yeah, I just want to say something quick on all of, planning and staff to agree on all of together, that's very beautiful. When they're to agree on something, that's wonderful. And that's all I got to say. I recommend approval.
All right, anybody else like to be heard on these items? All right, they will close the public hearings. They have a motion to approve items fifty-nine through sixty-three.
Yes, your honor, make a motion to follow staff's recommendation and planning commission recommendation for approval of all these items, all conditions, please.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Close. Motion carries, there's been a request to pull fifty-eight. I'll read that into the record. SUP two-seven-three-one-seven, special use permit. The applicant is Anthony Tarvin at Al. The owner is Mission Spring Properties LLC, request for special use permit for a proposed tattoo parlor body piercing studio at eleven-oh-four Fremont Street in Ward Five. It's a public hearing. Yes.
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident, without tattoos, how many tattoo parlors are there in the city of Las Vegas total currently? And why do we need another one? Why do we need one on East Fremont Street? Anybody?
It's America.
As I replied, there was no response.
I did, I said it's America.
Oh, it's America?
Free enterprise system.
I see.
That's the reason why.
I, in other words, you pronounce it Chipotle, not Chipotle, thank you.
Well, thank you for the correction.
In America.
Thank you for the correction. All right, then I have a motion on item fifty-eight, please.
Thank you, mayor. I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of this item.
All right, thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Close. Motion carries. Okay. Sixty-four and sixty-five. Sixty-four is WVR two-six-four-four-one. It's going to be a public hearing. This is a waiver. The applicant owner is Corestone LLC, request for a waiver of Title eighteen point twelve point one-three-oh, to allow First Street to terminate in a dead-end street where a cul-de-sac is required at the southeast corner of First Street and Boulder Avenue. This is in Ward Three. The planning commission recommends denial. The staff recommends approval, subject to conditions. The companion item is sixty-five, which is VAC two-six-four-four-three. The applicant owner is Corestone LLC, petition to vacate Boulder Avenue between First Street and Casino Center Boulevard, the alley generally located at the northwest corner of Boulder Avenue and Casino Center Boulevard, and a portion of the west side of Casino Center Boulevard between Coolidge and Boulder Avenue. This is in Ward Three. The planning commission recommends denial. The staff recommends approval, subject to conditions. These are both public hearings, which I now declare open. Is the applicant owner here?
Your honor.
Yes.
I thought.
I'm sorry.
Your honor, I talked to Mr. Isbit and through some due diligence on everyone's part that was involved by this, I think we came up with a workable solution. On the vacation, we're just going to vacate it to the east side of First Street to Casino Center. We are going to allow a bollards to be put up on First Street with a little cul-de-sac there, and we're going to allow some access from Mr. Drum's property through their forest deliveries and those things that are necessary. We do have staff ready to read into the records some conditions for approval. If we have those read in right now, if you'd like, sir.
Okay, we'll do that and then we'll have a public hearing. Would you please read those into the record?
Yes, mayor. I'd like to recommend we modify condition number twelve to read as follows of item number sixty-five, vacation two-six-four-four-three. Prior to recordation of the order of vacation, submit a site development plan review for review and approval by the city council for the entire area of Boulder Avenue requested for vacation with this application, showing this area as a pedestrian-oriented arts plaza within a larger overall development. The order of vacation may record in phases, with phase one corresponding to the area encumbered by the Tenoco's Urban Lounge, and phase two being the balance of the area proposed for vacation. Phase two shall not record until a permit is issued for the construction of such plaza improvements, including appropriate First Street termination improvements, as to be depicted on the site development plan review required by condition above. In the interim, appropriate encroachment agreements shall be submitted to allow the design and construction of the required improvements within the public right-of-way prior to recordation of the order of vacation, as well as for those portions of the plaza to remain as public right-of-way.
Thank you. And Margot?
Yes, sir. I'm here, Mayor Protem. We would request that on number sixty-five, a condition be added, that the applicant shall submit an hours of delivery plan to the Departments of Planning and Development and Public Works for approval prior to the recordation of the order of vacation. Additionally, no delivery shall be allowed on Saturdays or Sundays.
Thank you.
That's it, your honor?
All right, thank you very much. Would anybody from the public like to be heard, a public hearing?
Yes. Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident of the Arts District, Las Vegas, Nevada. Is there any relation between Corestone and Cornerstone? And who are the owners of both? Question number one. Question number two, on the related companion item, as you said, apparently you're taking both of them together. Who is going to fund the public improvements and amenities on what is commonly known as the Agon Art Sculpture Garden Plaza, which is the facility that will be located in the area that you're currently going to vacate?
That's going to be funded by the stipend money, the sale of land, the federal lands that we have as part of the park program.
Is there a note?
I don't have the total amount in front of me right now.
Okay, with regard to the ownership of Corestone and Cornerstone?
There's no relationship between the two. Mr. Isbit or Mr. Miles is the owner of Corestone, and the owner of Cornerstone is irrelevant.
It's irrelevant?
Yes.
Well, he has to be on the planning commission.
What does it do with this? So it's irrelevant.
So what? He's on the planning commission.
So what?
And he has property matter.
Who cares? Okay, next.
My name is Jack Solomon. I own property on Boulder Street, which is now before the council. I have two simple statements to make. First, I don't see the wisdom or the planning to take away what's always been thought to be Boulder Street to be a world-class sculpture garden. To give it to private enterprise and take it away from the public, I am desperately against. I think it's a key part to the development of the Arts District. Secondly, with the mayor's help, we were supposed to try to work things out together between myself and Wes and other people. We had several meetings with the attorney for the Sculpture Garden Foundation. I thought we had agreed on something. He drew up a thing where Wes was going to get up to twenty-five feet for his urban lounge, and that would, because Boulder Street is eighty feet across, so that would have cut us down to fifty-five feet. And we thought, I left the meeting and I thought everything was agreed to, and then I heard that the other owner that's with Wes on the other side of Boulder Street was not agreeable to that. He wanted easement to put tables into the Boulder Street and so on and so forth, which really make the thing too narrow.
It's unfair. Let me just interrupt you for one moment.
Sure.
Because the mayor, Protem, and myself have been, he in particular, has been very much on top of this, and he advised me this morning that all the parties had agreed to what he had proposed in his motion.
That's not true.
Well, well.
That's just not true.
But that's what he was advised. So this comes of a bit of a, what can I say, a shock, because nothing that happens over there with all of the moving parts is a shock to me anymore, but I was under the impression this was all resolved.
We haven't seen a map, we haven't, look, if anybody would be advised, it would be myself. Wes and I met as recently as Friday, and it got a little vociferous, so I walked out. That's the last that I heard.
All right.
So I just think that this would be, that this would take things away from the public, it would take things away from the Arts District. There's no assurance that any of this stuff could get built. There's been no paperwork done on this kind of a thing. I think it's premature at this point, and I see no reason whatsoever for the city to give away valuable land, especially when you're taking it away from the public and for a huge attraction that could come about. We are going to have a sculpture meeting this afternoon. We're hiring a professional fundraiser to raise five million dollars. We think we can raise it in six months. At the last sculpture park meeting, it was brought up what the Sculpture Park Association would want, and because no agreement could be reached, it was tabled. So the sculpture park itself has not signed on to this. So when it was said that everybody's agreed to it, it just is not true whatsoever. Thank you.
Good afternoon, your honor, council members. Tabitha Fitton, thirty-eight hundred Howard Hughes Parkway, and I'm here on behalf of Barnett Lieberman. I think I can shed some light on the representation that the, those that were opposed to this vacation are now in support of it. I think from a land use perspective, there's two things going on here. There's some issues that the parties need to resolve that the city can't necessarily get involved in, so there's some contractual issues between the parties that are unresolved, but it isn't frankly a land use issue and something I think that this body can opine to. I do think that, I understand Mr. Solomon's concerns, and I think Barnett shares those concerns, but I think the condition as read into the record does address those concerns with respect to the land use issues. Mr. Miles is required to submit a plan for the development of Boulder Street before this vacation can record, and he's also required to do a number of other things based on that condition before this vacation can record that protects the interests as they've been expressed to me by Mr. Lieberman and also Mr. Solomon, so.
And the plan would have to be approved by the council.
That's exactly right.
So in other words, we're just giving them permission to go forward, propose a plan, and if it satisfies us, it would take place. If it doesn't, then fact is.
It doesn't happen, exactly. The city still has the leverage and the protection to maintain the right-of-way should the owners not do it. They said they were going to do it.
Your honor, that's why I had the condition written in the record first. All right, I appreciate this.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wants to be heard? All right, anyone else wants to be heard?
I'm making really swift. When you've got planning and staff, that's when I'm speaking on it very quick. When planning is against 64 and 65 for some reason, they recommend denial. Well, and staff, you know, they kind of lean in your direction sometimes. What I'm saying is that this needed to be looked at carefully, so like you said, you're going to move it along and get back to it before you make a final decision, that's good. But there's some items in here that really, you know, really need to take a long look at before you make a final decision on it for good.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Wesley Miles Isbell, 107 East Charleston Boulevard, the applicant here. I hear a lot of things being said, and I sit in these meetings, and I am a principal or an executive board member on all of these boards, I'm the founder of these boards, and what is being portrayed is not the truth that I understand it. All that aside, is to me at this moment, a bit, excuse me, irrelevant. The city, along with Sculpture Park Association and the Neighbors Association, have been working for years to put on, put together a world-class sculpture park. We've been working with Pogomeyer, who is a chosen designer from the city, who is working with, yeah, Anastasi. We control both sides of the blocks, we're building very large art-related developments. The same designers that are working for and with us and with the city on Agam are doing our designs which are here before you for the Boulder Plaza or the rest of the Plaza. We have stated from the beginning, our intentions are to make it a plaza. I believe I'm the only one here that actually has the background and the pedigree and the proof of being here for the years and staying here and not being in other cities and being the homegrown advocate for the arts. And I think that everyone else who doubts our intentions is a newcomer and should be looked at with a certain amount of skepticism. I think that the condition will hold our feet to the fire and produce the plaza and the sculpture park that we all hope and dream, and I would ask you all, City Council today, for approval on this. Thank you.
And I'll stay up in case there are any questions that you may have.
Roger Drum, 3200 Beemery Court, North Las Vegas, owner of Number One Charleston, the S2 Art Building. I'm happy to see that we've worked out a temporary access for the cul-de-sac on First Street, and until such time, the overall plan or assemblage changes and evolves. I think that's the right thing to do. And I am opposed to the vacation. My fiduciary relationship is to Jack Solomon, under lease legally. I leased the building to Jack. Through that lease, I'm obligated to stand by that lease agreement, and that lease agreement has that access involved in it. Jack came to me with the original plan to put the Agam structure on the west side, and we were preparing to do that. I think the, I have a couple of questions of staff if I could. One is, are we still proceeding to break ground sometime in September, August, and complete the project by January on the west side for the Agam substructure?
Mr. Mayor, it is my understanding that we are on schedule to complete those improvements.
Yeah, my only comments, they brought the plans to me for review, Jorge Cervantes did, and those two items that I brought up to him at the time, one was there's an 85-foot deep GPA monitoring well that sits right there in that area that you're, and it's live. It has the cap on it, it needs to be filled with concrete and abandoned. And they're proceeding, I believe staff is proceeding to do that, is that correct?
I'm not specifically familiar with that portion of the plan. The city engineers, Design Division is heading that, and I believe they're informed and on top of that.
The second issue that came up with Pogomeyer's design, they're required by law to accept all of the survey marks.
I think we're going beyond the open meeting law here, I'm sorry. These aren't agendized items. We can't get involved with that at this point.
But the west side is proceeding forward with their original plan, is that correct?
I don't know the answer to that, but I'm just concerned that we're going beyond the...
I'm opposed, I'm opposed to both issues, but fiduciary relationship is to Jack, and I'm opposed.
All right. Anybody else like to be heard? Well, I'll make my position known, Mayor Protem, and that is, I've been proceeding for years with the expectation that we would have a first-class, world-class sculpture garden there. I've been proceeding for years with the expectation of having the Agam sculpture there, and when this matter comes back to us with Mr. Isbell's proposal, I'm going to be looking for that to be assured when I cast my vote.
Well, Your Honor, I think these conditions that were read into the record assures everybody that it's going to be done. Mr. Isbell is agreeing to that. To me, it's as foolproof as you can get it, okay?
But I know when you deal with the personalities in the Arts District, and they're here and I'm looking at them in the eye, that they are moving targets, that's all I can tell you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Bart Anderson, Public Works. I do want to emphasize, though, that the actual Agam sculpture is not a part of the city's improvements, that will be done privately.
No, I appreciate that, that would have to be done privately. And as Mr. Solomon says, he's going to engage in fundraising for that. Okay, I'm ready to adjourn motion.
Yes, Your Honor, I make a motion for approval, item number 64, with all conditions as added.
All right, let's vote, please.
Excuse me, the condition amendments are on 65, just to be...
Let's vote on 64, please. Motion carries, 65.
Make a motion for approval, with all conditions as amended.
All right, let's vote. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 67, 68, and 69. 67 is GPA 27024, general plan amendment. It's going to be a public hearing, the applicant owner is Anderson Dairy, Inc., request to amend a portion of the southeast sector plan of the master plan from SC Service Commercial to LIR Light Industry Research on 2.86 acres at the northeast corner of Las Vegas Boulevard and Surles Avenue in Ward Five. Planning commission and staff recommend approval. 68 is ZON 27025, rezoning related to GPA 27024. The applicant owner is Anderson Dairy, request for rezoning from C1 Limited Commercial to CM Commercial Industrial on 2.86 acres at the northeast corner of Las Vegas Boulevard and Surles Avenue in Ward Five. Planning commission and staff recommend approval. And 69 is SUP 27026, special use permit related to the prior two items. The applicant owner is Anderson Dairy, request for a special use permit for proposed 30,248 square foot heavy manufacturing and bottling facility at the northeast corner of Las Vegas Boulevard and Surles Avenue in Ward Five. Planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. This is a public hearing on all three of these items, I now declare them open. Yes, sir.
My name is Russell Peterson, I represent Anderson Dairy, and I'm here to answer any questions that council might have.
Very good. I understand that Councilman Barlow took a tour.
Yes, Mayor, but I'll save my comments until after.
Public comment?
Public comment.
Okay, certainly. Are there any questions?
I'm going to, Your Honor, I'm going to have some questions for Councilman Barlow about the dairy industry when he's prepared.
All right, very good. So folks, does anyone want to be heard during the public hearing? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I abated this item last meeting because I wanted to have an opportunity to sit down with the applicant to go over the details of what they're preparing in this industrial area. Anderson Dairy has been around for quite some time, and I had an opportunity to sit down, or actually tour with Mr. Dave Kuhn, which was a great tour, which I highly recommend that this council have an opportunity to go over to Anderson Dairy to take the tour, because it was very educational. And the school buses from the various elementary schools, I believe it was a school from Ward Six and Ward Four that actually came in when I went over to visit, and the school children really enjoyed the process in which Anderson Dairy processes their milk, and you have an opportunity to go through all of the stages of their facility. But we're here to talk about the new process of which they're going to be bottling water, and that also, or they're bottling plant, I should say.
That's correct.
Okay, and that will also be an educational process for youth and school-aged children to be involved in as well, as far as how the process actually works. And I was actually surprised, because I hadn't taken the tour before, to know that it's right here in our downtown area, and it's something that all schoolchildren should have an opportunity to be a part of. And as I understand, they can just contact Anderson Dairy and get on their calendar to schedule a time for that tour, so that's a plug for Anderson Dairy.
Absolutely, thank you.
And I want to thank Mr. Kuhn for that tour. So with that being said, Mayor, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation of item number 67 for the GPA, and that would be my motion at this time.
All right, before we vote, Your Honor...
I'm just curious, Councilman, did you get a chance to milk a cow while you were there?
I didn't get a chance to milk a cow, but they did. I'll hold my...
Wait a second, do we have cows?
Plastic cows out on the lawn, yes.
That was going to be the next question. How do you get the cows in and out of there without us knowing about it, is all I want to know.
It was a great tour.
It's good to have you down there, Councilman.
There's a motion on the floor, Mayor.
Before I, at least give me some ice cream.
They did send ice cream back for the 10th floor, and I was able to share with your executive assistants. You were in a meeting at the time in your office, but your executive assistants and all the offices that were there, they all received ice cream from Anderson Dairy. They sent it up to the 10th floor.
Well, I'm owed one.
Yes, sir, we can correct that.
All right, thank you very much. You have Bombay ice cream.
We have all kinds of ice cream. I don't think we have Bombay ice cream, though.
There is a motion, I think we better vote before I get in trouble. Let's vote, you're in trouble. Post. Motion carries, 68, please.
Yes, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
All right, please vote. Motion carries, 69, please.
Yes, once again, I would like to thank the applicant for your due diligence and sitting down with me, and I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation, subject to all conditions.
Very good, please vote. Post, please. Motion carries, good luck to you.
Thank you, Council, very much. Thank you.
Item 71 is DIR 27946, a water feature exemption. The applicant owner is South Shore Professional Center, request to allow the operation of a water feature which totals 855 square feet at an existing office development on two acres at 8440 West Lake Mead Boulevard in Ward Four. The staff recommends approval. Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon, my name's Tina Cameron, and I'm with MDL Group, and I represent South Shore Professional Center. I'm just here for any questions, if you have any.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions, the young lady? Okay, Councilman?
Thank you, you're on a move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. 72, 73, 74, 76, and 77. 72 is MOD 27044, a major modification. The applicant owner is Hitt W. Douglas Family Trust, request for a major modification of the Town Center land use plan from UCTC Urban Center Mixed-Use Town Center to GCTC General Commercial Town Center, special land use designation on 5.1 acres at the northwest corner of Durango Drive and Deer Springs Drive in Ward Six. The staff recommends denial, the planning commission recommends approval. 73 is SUP 27046, special use permit related to the prior item. The applicant owner is the same, request for a special use permit for a proposed 5,376 square foot liquor establishment tavern at the northwest corner of Durango Drive and Deer Springs Way in Ward Six. Planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. 74 is SUP 27047, special use permit related to the prior items. Applicant owner is the same, request for a special use permit for a proposed 3,200 square foot restaurant with drive-through at the northwest corner of Durango Drive and Deer Springs Way. The staff recommends denial, the planning commission, pardon me, recommends approval, subject to conditions. 76 is SUP 27049, special use permit related to the prior items. Same applicant owner, request for a special use permit for a proposed beer/wine cooler off-sale establishment in conjunction with a convenience store at the northwest corner of Durango Drive and Deer Springs Way. Planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. And finally, 77, SDR 27051, site development plan review related to the prior items. The same applicant owner, Hitt W. Douglas Family Trust, request for a site development plan review for a 41,741 square foot retail and office development with waivers to allow an eight-foot landscape buffer where a 15-foot buffer is required on Durango Drive, a 15-foot setback where 20-foot setback is required for a gas station, and Town Center landscape finger requirements within the parking area on 5.1 acres at the northwest corner of Durango Drive and Deer Springs Way. The staff recommends denial, the planning commission recommends approval, subject to conditions. As I mentioned before, these are all in Ward Six, they're all public hearings, and I declare them now all open. Gentlemen?
I am Douglas Hitt, applicant and owner. I live at 2208 Aliyah Court here in Las Vegas, and I'm here with my consultant, Gary Leabold.
Okay, did you want to be heard, or are you here just to answer questions?
I'm here to answer any questions. I am back in front of council. We've had some good discussions about this project, I've met with the neighbors on several occasions, and I'm here to answer any questions of staff or council.
Very good. Any questions of Mr. Hitt at this time? All right, folks, public hearing?
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident, where's the elevation exhibit?
You're saying the way it's going to look, are you asking?
Elevation means the ground.
Oh, okay.
How many stories?
Well, please, who wants to answer the questions? He's asking some questions. You gentlemen could add something?
I'll ask for the mayor.
Please.
How many stories?
How many stories are there?
It's one story.
Okay.
What would be the general sense of aesthetics of this property compared with conformance with the surrounding area?
I'm sure they'll say, "Very nice."
Who?
I agree with the mayor, "Very nice."
They said "very nice," what else?
I said "very nice," they said "very nice."
You don't live there.
I don't live there?
You don't live in that area.
Actually, if you refer to the rendering right here, sir, this is the aesthetics and the look.
Beautiful pictures, it's going to look exactly like that when it's completed.
We hope so.
We hope so. All right, then I hope you make the right move, because if it isn't, you will hear about that at the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak or threaten, or whatever people do?
Can't beat the cow story.
I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got to let the council know that Mr. Hitt has been an example of a developer going out, working with the neighbors in the community to come up with a development that's compatible with that area. If you recall, a few years ago, this project has gone from a two-story, 20, I mean, two 24-story towers with a tavern, a community commercial center with buffers, but I'd like to express my appreciation to Mr. Hitt for working with the neighbors on this project, working with my office. It is the neighbors that are adjacent to this site whose comments were critical on this project, and we've talked about this in great detail. And I would also like to thank you for being willing to eliminate the gas pumps, that was a contentious item for those neighbors. And I think, Margot, you have the new site plan, and when we get down to the SDR, I'll let you kick in and do what you do best. This eliminates the remaining major concerns and adjacent property orders and remains consistent with other approvals in this Town Center area. And Mr. Hitt, I wish you the best of luck, you know that. It'd be awesome if you could pick up those other parcels in that area and really make this a significant project for yourself. With that, Your Honor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please.
On item 72, I would move to follow staff and planning commission's recommendation for approval, with all conditions.
Please vote. Motion carries.
And on the gen item 73, Your Honor, I will follow, would move to follow planning commission's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Let's vote. Post, please. Motion carries.
And gen item 74, Your Honor, would move to follow planning commission's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Please vote. Post, please. Motion carries.
And on the gen item 76, would also move to follow staff and planning commission's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Let's vote. Motion carries.
And before I make a motion on the gen item 77, Your Honor, Director?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. The change to condition number one would be to delete the reference to SUP 27048. Change to condition number three to read that all developments... Change to condition number three to read that all development shall be in conformance with the site plan and landscape plan, date stamped May 5, '08, and the floor plan and building elevations date stamped 4/22/08, except as amended by conditions herein, and an added condition that the applicant shall submit a revised site plan and landscape plan, removing the gas canopy located to the west of the building designated C store prior to the issuance of building permits.
Are those agreeable?
Yes, they are. Thank you.
Awesome. And with that, Your Honor, I would move to follow planning commission's recommendation for approval of Agenda item 77, as amended by the Director, and that's my motion.
Let's vote. Post, please. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Have a good day.
78, 79, and 80. 78 is ZON 25278. It's going to be a public hearing. The applicant owner is Investment Solutions, Inc. Request for rezoning from U undeveloped O Office, general plan designation to O Office on 1.04 acres at the southeast corner of Red Coach Avenue and Balsam Street in Ward 4. Planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. 79 is VAR 25277. The applicant owner is Investment Solutions, Inc. Request for variance to allow 56 parking spaces where 80 spaces are required for a proposed two-story 23,941 square foot office building on 1.04 acres at the southeast corner of Red Coach Avenue and Balsam Street in Ward 4. Planning commission and staff recommend denial. And 80 is SDR 25276. Same applicant owner, request for site development plan review for a two-story 23,354 square foot office building on 1.04 acres at the southeast corner of Red Coach Avenue and Balsam Street, and this application has been amended to a 35-foot tall 20,656 square foot office building. The planning commission and staff recommend denial. These are all public hearings, which I now declare open. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. Sheldon Colan, 180 Cassie Way, representing the applicant. Since our original submittal, we have altered the design to completely come in, to abide by all of zoning requirements and also staff's requirements. We do now have enough parking for this project, and even though planning has denied it, they did recommend us do a rendering, which is now on the monitor in front of you, to better depict what this project will look like.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The applicant's information is correct. The variance is no longer required, and therefore, if the applicant wishes to do so, he may withdraw that without prejudice over the, at this time, and then you would move on with items 78 and 80.
Yeah, we do wish to withdraw that.
Public hearings?
Yeah. Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. That's a very attractive, very aesthetic render. One question with regard to the landscaping. It's hard to be determined with certainty. Is that what you call zerscaping?
Are you able to answer that question, sir?
It's desert landscaping, yes.
Desert landscaping. That's something like what the mayor might propose to have in his backyard, for example, zerscaping?
Front yard.
Front yard. Okay, backyard, the pool, and the collectlon, et cetera. Still lush with greenery.
Thank you.
This is somewhere in mid-scale, apparently, not totally zerscaped.
Correct.
But somewhat. At any rate, that appears to be a very attractive property. I recommend approval.
Thank you. All right, anybody else like to be heard on this?
I'm going to make a swift walk. You and McGowan, y'all keep fighting all summer while I'm gone. I love all you guys, and on this particular item, I have nothing really to say. I just want you and him to keep fighting while I'm gone. Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard on this matter? All right, sitting down, I'll close the public hearing then. Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. I will, just a couple of opening comments. I'll support the rezoning request, but, and certainly support their withdrawal, which we did, on the parking variance, but the actual site plan, is it included, the, all the revisions?
If I may, Mayor and Councilman, the parking now meets, the trash enclosure issue has been corrected, and there are no waivers or variances required at this time.
I just still feel, and this is the first time someone's shown up for this, and that's not your fault, but even with the revisions, there's still some concern, as was recognized in the staff report. This area north of the mini storage and certainly Rainbow and up north to the Santa Fe, tremendous transition going on, especially with those dozen or so existing homes to the north. We have some higher-density apartments tucked up against the freeway. The gentleman to the west of you, across Balsam, behind the two homes, is in the process now to get a rezoning and general plan amendment application before us. They are keeping the existing structure, single-story, and pretty much developing a little complex there as far as single-story homes that are being converted to office. The one major concern, and the reason I can't support what's before us today, is just we're introducing the 35-foot, and is it a two-story?
Yes, it is.
Because I think if it was the end of the line, if this was the last project to go in, I don't think I'd have the same concern. But with all the undeveloped parcels, not only adjacent to you, to the south, we have two acres and then an additional two acres east of Rainbow and along the entire Rainbow quarter, I just, I think it's premature to introduce a two-story product here. It really is just, from my perspective, and staff has indicated, I don't know if it's the latest report or a middle report or the original report, but they call out in the staff report that it is overbuilt, that we're trying to put too much onto the property. So I'll certainly let you comment, and I'll put onto the record if you need my justification. But if, I don't know if you're representing the ownership group or not, but I'd certainly appreciate, if you want to develop in this area, if we have an opportunity to sit down and take a look, because what you do is obviously going to trigger what will happen to the south and the southeast of you. I don't know if you have any comments?
Yes. Yeah, we have conformed to everything staff required. We do not feel the project is too high. That's why when planning objected, we reduced the building back to 35 feet, which is in the zoning. This is master plan for this area. We've tried to do the best we can to not ask for any variances or any special requirements or considerations.
But the reduction, what was the height reduced from?
From 40 feet to 35 feet. It was the extra five feet that would have required the variance that we now have removed.
That's the five feet and just the, I think, the total square footage. If these are the updated numbers, go from 23,3 to 20,006, so that's a, give or take a 2,700 reduction.
Correct.
So it's still, it's a pretty intense project being placed in an area of transition. Margot, I want to reference two comments, and if staff wants to change their thoughts on this. But the first one, staff supports the recommendation for rezoning, but the scope and design do not allow for a project that recognizes this area is still transitioning from rural single-family to small office buildings.
That would still be correct, sir.
And that's, the second statement, I think likewise calls out, and this one is more specific, the proposal does not conform to 1908-05-0 commercial development standards due to the overbuilding of the site?
Sir, that was, and Mayor and Councilman, that was principally and originally due to the variance. With the reduction of the square footage, as you indicated, and the elimination of the variance, that is not so much the issue. I misspoke, however, there is one waiver that is still required, and that is the building placement. This building is set back with all of the parking on the street front, and the code requires, or suggests, rather, that the building should be placed at the corner, so there does remain one waiver, and therefore, staff would still recommend denial of the site plan, but again, approval of the rezoning.
Okay.
If I may?
Please.
That's news to us, because we've been working with staff for months now, and last time, you know, within the last week, we were told explicitly by the person that we're dealing with on staff that they completely would recommend approval for this, so this is news to us.
Well, you know, it's, I can certainly, we can verify that, but not today. We're not going to debate that today. At the same time, I was somewhat surprised that not only once, but twice, when we had these items before us, so I could introduce, or get introduced to you and the ownership group, no one showed up. So I, I mean, there's certainly been a breakdown of communication. We'll follow up as far as internally what staff says, but I will, certainly willing to move forward with the rezoning. Your Honor, so on item number 78, I would move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
All right, let's vote on that. Motion carries.
On 79, it's been requested to withdraw this without prejudice.
All right.
Support that motion.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. And 80, please.
On item number 80, I would move for denial, because of the reasons stated on the record. I just think they're trying to put too much building onto this site, and as referenced with some of the staff report comments that were put onto the record, that would be my motion.
All right, let's vote on that motion, please. Motion carries. Good luck to you. Items 81 and 82. 81 is ZON 27507, a rezoning. The applicant owner is Las Vegas Valley Water District. Request for rezoning from U undeveloped L Low Density Residential, general plan designation to CV Civic on five acres on the north side of Centennial Parkway, approximately 330 feet west of Fort Apache Road in Ward 6. The planning commission and staff recommend approval. 82 is SDR 27508, a site development plan review related to the prior item. The same applicant. The owner is the Las Vegas Valley Water District, and the request for a site development plan review for a proposed 10,719 square foot utility installation on 14 acres at the northwest corner of Fort Apache Road and Centennial Parkway in Ward 6. The planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. These are both public hearings, which I now declare open. Yes, sir.
Your Honor, before he begins?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to have to abstain from Agenda items 81 and 82 because of my professional relationship with the Southern Nevada Water Authority, who has a direct relationship with the Las Vegas Valley Water District.
All right, thank you. All right, are there any, would you like to be heard?
Please.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. Bronson Mack, 1,001 South Valley View here on behalf of the applicant. This project does consist of a 30 million gallon reservoir and pumping station to be part of the Las Vegas Valley Water District water distribution system. Will provide water into the Centennial Hills area for commercial and residential customers. This, before you today, is of course the rezoning. We are asking for a rezoning of just a five-acre parcel of this 14-acre site. The reason we're just asking for the five acres is because the remaining nine has already been rezoned. This five-acre parcel was initially in the county, was annexed to the city so that we could get this site under one jurisdiction. That's why we're asking for the five, or for the rezoning on that five-acre parcel. We concur with staff recommendations with regards to that item. With regards to item 82, which is the site development plan review, we do concur with most of staff's recommendations. However, we are asking that we take a moment to talk a little bit about item number four, condition number four. This is with regards to the landscaping. Now, certainly, the Las Vegas Valley Water District, and with our connection with the Southern Nevada Water Authority, and all of our efforts to promote water conservation, promote the Water Smart Landscape Program, we will absolutely be landscaping this facility. That landscaping, however, we would like to keep to the exterior of the site for aesthetic purposes. That will all be water-efficient landscaping on the exterior of this site, along the Centennial Parkway frontage, as well as the Fort Apache frontage. However, in condition number four, there is a, an additional request here that a landscape buffer be included along the western property line, adjacent to the neighboring residential development, sufficient to provide a tree every 20 feet on center in an approved configuration as outlined by Title 19.12.030. With regards to that portion of this condition, that would require us to install trees along the interior of this water distribution site. We certainly understand the need to provide a buffer within the residential area, and we will be providing a bit of a buffer there. There is going to be a 10-foot separation between the residential, the existing residential wall along the western portion of the site. There will be a 10-foot buffer between that existing wall and our 10-foot security fence. There'll be about a 10-foot buffer that'll be between there. Our concern with installing trees along the interior of the site is, number one, they're going to use more water. It's going to require us to provide more water to the, or use more water on this site in order to support those trees. And number two, there is an elevation difference between these residential properties and the water district site. Now, certainly, a tree can grow. We certainly understand that. However, it would, we feel, take some time before those trees were really even visible from the residential properties because of that elevation difference. We have met with these residents. I've met with them numerous times. There has not been any discussion about having any trees or any sort of landscaping on the interior of the site. Just a little concerned to kind of switch gears on those residents, install these trees, and now we've got a potential impact to some of those residential views that are already there. So we would ask that that portion of condition number four be removed, but with regards to the rest of these conditions, we do concur. Available to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? All right, it's a public hearing.
My name is Hodges 123 Sir David. Since it's the water district, and water is always a part of my best interest, and it is for the good of the community that they build in the water plant anyway, and talking about a few trees is good for oxygen, so the objective is, I know the height of elevation has a lot to do with it, but the main thing is, this is about water, and water is vital to the community, so I know you're going to pass it, and as long as the plant is built, nothing else matters, so I'm in favor of passing it. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to be heard on this? All right, sitting down, I'll close the public hearing. Mayor Pro Tem?
On item 81, I make a motion for approval, with all conditions.
All right, let's vote on item 81, please. Motion carries.
And on 82, I make a motion for approval with removal of that item in condition number four. I can certainly appreciate staff finding to help us out on that, but I think he gave us a pretty good argument about why not to put the trees in, so I would ask that that be withdrawn, and that would be my motion, Your Honor.
All right.
If I may, just to clarify, Mayor Pro Tem and Mayor, that would be the elimination of the last sentence in condition number four.
That's correct. Let's vote. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. 83 is SUP 27448, special use permit. The applicant is J Tree Money Stores. The owner is MVR Corporation. Request for a special use permit for a financial institution specified, and a waiver to allow 1,120 square feet of floor area where 1,500 is required at 1610 West Oaky Boulevard in Ward 3. The staff recommends denial. The planning commission recommends approval, subject to conditions. Yes, sir.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Jeff Share, and I represent J Tree Money Stores.
All right.
I'm here for any questions that you might have.
Fine. Are there any questions of the gentleman? All right, folks, a public hearing. Would anyone like to be heard?
This is a very close call on the planning commission vote, and staff's denial. What's the reason for staff's denial?
It's the waiver of the square footage.
Well, why was the waivers, why was the square footage waived?
It has been waived, yet they're asking for a waiver.[1795.82]
Well, why they ask for a waiver? They need smaller space.
It's supposed to be fifteen-hundred square feet.
I understand.
They only have eleven-hundred-and-twenty.
Why?
It's the size of the store. It's the size of the store.
That's still.
That's the size of the.
Okay, so another reason limited already in scope.
Right.
And why, why is it on the agenda at all, and it's not in conformance with requirements?
They, that's why they're asking for a waiver.
Oh, they're here to ask you to change it?
Right.
In that case, deny, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to be heard on this? Oh, boy.
Okay, I'm gonna make it quick, Oscar. Everybody gonna jump on me today, wonderful. I love it. But anyway, when, when, when planning is pretty well split on it, so they just barely ease by them, and staff is totally against it, so that's all, I'm just saying, take a good look at the project before you make your decision. Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard? All right, we'll close the public hearing then. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Your Honor, I went over to this site a couple different times, I can certainly understand, you're trying to fill up a shopping center, I don't see the need to have this use at this location, I don't think it's compatible with the surrounding neighborhood there, they're not in a residential area, I understand that, but there has to be, to me, a need for this use, and I don't see the need at this location. My motion, Your Honor, is going to be for a denial of this application. All right?
Let's vote on that. Post? Motion carries. Eighty-four is RQR two-seven-four-two-three, required review, the applicant is Lamar Outdoor Advertising, the owner is PK One Rainbow Promenade LLC, required five-year review of an approved special use permit, which allowed a fourteen-foot by forty-eight-foot all-tema sign, billboard signed at twenty-two-oh-one North Rainbow Boulevard and Ward Five. Planning Commission staff recommend approval, subject to conditions, it's a public hearing which is now open.
Scott Nafsky with Lamar Advertising, eighteen-sixty-three Helm Drive, we accept all staff's conditions and ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any questions of the gentleman? Close the public hearing, anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilor Borlow?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation of this item. This billboard has been adjacent to US ninety-five for quite some time, and it is in a, an appropriate location behind a major strip mall and adjacent to US ninety-five with no residence within a specific distance for there to be any issue, so that would be my motion at this time.
Let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Item eighty-five is ROC two-eight-one-three-two, review of condition, the applicant is Southwest Desert Equities LLC, the owner K R Land Company LLC et al., request for a review of condition to remove condition B of an approved site development plan review, which require the master development plan and design standards submitted on January the twenty-ninth, two thousand and eight on twenty-three-point-sixty-two acres at the southeast corner of Wallopi Way and Deer Springs Way and Ward Six. The staff recommends approval, subject to conditions, it's a public hearing which is now open.
Good afternoon, Your Honor, members of the council. Mark Fiorentino, I represent the applicant on this item. Maybe just a very brief explanation for you, we, we agree with the staff recommendation. This is just to correct essentially a clerical error. You might remember this item, there was a number of residents who had expressed some concerns about it. We had made a number of changes to the design standards to address those concerns, and the record just cited the wrong date on the design standards. So this corrects the date to make sure that you're using the design standards that conform to the promises that we made at the hearing.
All right, any questions of Mr. Fiorentino? Folks, public hearing?
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. Is there a, an elevation exhibit?
Mr. Fiorentino, do you have an elevation exhibit?
I will look, I'm not sure we do today, we had, we had them today that you held the original hearing. Yeah, I actually do, I don't know how well you'll be able to see it, but.
Okay, overhead, please.
These are the elevations you approved, and they're not changing. Your action today doesn't have any impact on what was approved or what we will actually build.
Very good.
That's illegible. It looks unimpressive, but adequate. I recommend approval, mainly because I'll take the word, because gentleman is always right on the mark. Thank you very much.
All right, anybody else want to give us their opinion? All right, we'll close the public hearing then. Councilor Ross?
Your Honor, I would move to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, let's vote. Post?
But I'm unimpressed.
Motion carries. Item eighty-six.
Just for the record, Your Honor, that's probably not the first time, nor the last time, I was described as unimpressive but adequate.
Oh, see, I misunderstood him.
Good afternoon.
I, I thought he said impressive but inadequate. Okay, eighty-six, Madam Clerk, would you please set the public hearing dates, it appeals from the City Planning Commission meeting, Centennial Hills Architectural Review Committee, and dangerous buildings are nuisance letter abatements. Thank you. Okay, eighty-seven, this is the time for citizens' participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council, no subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you'd like to be heard, please step up, give us your name, we'll put the three-minute timer on.
My name is Adam Hodges one-two-three, Sir David. I wanted to pass through to the economist, the Barlow, and history being made by the two people, the candidates for the president, all three of their candidates, you know me, they all contacted me. The objective is, if Hillary represents all forty, fifty-three percent of our nation's total population are female, and then the kids and the men take care of the rest. The objective is, if Hillary doesn't take that vice president, I'm going to be really upset with her, because she is the last hope for women for the next eight years at least. Well, the, the objective is, Hillary, don't be the vice president, Obama most likely won't get elected. He ought to have her to get there. That's all I got to say. And I'm in a position to have the right to say that, because I heard from both of them, and you all know that, so that's all I'm here to say. Good luck to our country, but we do need a lady, and I hope Hillary make at least the vice president. Thank you.
All right, thank you. By the way, before Ms. Turner, before Ms. Turner speaks, we do have a representative from the city here who will address any issues if folks are homeless or need some attention as far as a homeless situation. She's here and would be happy to help anybody if they ask for her assistance.
Beatrice Turner, West Las Vegas. First of all, I want to say, Oscar, the lovely ladies came to visit me, the investigators, and got my stories, yes, they did, and they was quite lovely, although my neighbors was not too happy to see the automobile, they came in with their big pistols on the side, but oh, well, they get off it. My next question that I have to say, you know, since this grocery store is coming to our community, and I see everybody else have to bring something to people, community, they have to come and meet with the community first before it's approved. I want to know, when are they going to come and meet with the community to hear what we have to say before they come to be approved? I want to know when that's going to happen. Mr. Barlow?
Councilor Barlow, would you like to address that, or reserve that for a later time?
I mean, I can address it now, I mean, it's not subject to.
We can't take action, that's all.
We can't take action. We will be having a job fair.
I ain't talking about no job fair, I say a meeting with the community.
Well, I can arrange that.
Yes, because we would like to meet with them, you know, if they are new coming into our community, we have questions that we want to ask them. So, we, I ain't talking about no job fair, I'm talking about them coming into our community, what kind of business people are the, these people coming to our community, and we want to be able to ask that question. And my next question on this almighty meeting you're two going to hold with the religious people in our community about the churches, first of all, they have choked every bit of economics out of our community that can be choked out of it, because we got to be so many feet away from a church in order to have anything in our community. So now, when you meet with them, you tell them, if they want to leave, feel free, don't hesitate, if they need to go out by Mount Charleston to the spring, get on, because they ain't did nothing to uplift and enhance our community. So, siren out a tune, and I don't know why that waiver should affect us in our community, when we got three-hundred churches that's sitting in our community, you look at all of them. Ask me, how many got a daycare, senior center, a grocery store, anything, are they providing our community? Kind of think about it, when you meet with them reverends, ask them, how many summer jobs are they going to produce this year for the children in our community, since they're our religious leaders who have not led us anywhere? Tell them to provide some summer jobs for the children this summer.
Okay, would anybody else like to be heard?
Is that it?
You're next.
Okay. Hi, my name is Daniel Palmquist, and I'm here in Las Vegas resident, and came here just to utilize the time that I've been given to read from the Word. And I just wanted to say, and I took off from work today, but I did meet my appointment, and I took the rest of the time to come down here and speak with the city council. In light of all the economical problems that are going on in the United States, I just want to explain that the reason these things are happening is due to the moral decline, and that's because people aren't enforcing the laws that are on the books. And I'm not here to change times and laws, I just want the laws that are on the books to be enforced. But I'd like to read from the Holy Bible, which is the Word of God, and that's proven through prophecy, one-third of the Holy Bible is prophecy, and the reason we, we know that we can trust in the Holy Bible is because, because of that right there, and, and along with scientific proof, science is like centuries behind the true science of the Bible, that's why you don't have prophecy or anything like that in the Quran, or the Talmud, or any other religious, religious text, because they'd be exposed as a lie. Right here, it says in Second Chronicles, Chapter seven, verse fourteen, "If my people which are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven and will forgive their sin and will heal their land." So, repentance is not just being remorseful, but it's acknowledging that you're a sinner, wanting to do otherwise, and acting upon it. Repentance in and of itself is pretentious without Jesus, because the wages of sin is death, that's in the Old Testament and in the New Testament, Romans six-twenty-three, and it says, "The soul that sins shall die. He who keeps the whole law yet offends just in one point is guilty of it all." It's James two-ten. You need to trust in Jesus, he is the prophesied Messiah, he's fulfilled all the prophecies, and I'm, I'm testifying to that. And I used to live a wicked life, listening to Marilyn Manson, doing drugs, doing everything wicked under the sun, but you know what, he's, the Lord in heaven has changed me, and he can change you too. He's ready to forgive every sin you've ever committed, all you have to be willing is to stop your sin, he knows you can't do it by yourself, give your life to Jesus of Nazareth, and you will be forgiven, you'll spend eternity in heaven. The Bible says, "No eye has seen, no ear has heard, and no mind has imagined the good things God has prepared for those who love him." And it says that, that there will be no more death, no more sorrow, no more pain, nor suffering for the old world, and its evils are gone forever, but you must be born again, you have to acknowledge that, that you're not a good person, okay? To give you an analogy, okay, oh, I see the yellow lights on. Anyways, please read the Bible. If you have any questions, you need a Bible, please call me at three-five-seven-eight-eight-one-one, that, that is my, my Skype number, synchronized with my computer, so, thank you, have a good day.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Rusan Joshua Collins, and I do street preaching, Christian activism, and I'd just like to thank our supporters for praying for us, we had a lot of good breakthroughs, and just, I'd encourage those that are interested in helping us with the signing of any of the petitions we're having to come up, to end, you know, the promotion of sin, and to stop obscene materials, and homosexual parades, and other immorality and indecency, to contact Brother Scott at eight-four-five-seven-oh-six-five, that's eight-four-five-seven-oh-six-five. And also, I'd just like to remind the council, of course, and those watching, that, you know, during the times of slavery, slavery was legalized, it was made to be okay by the society, and, and though things are made legal in the eyes of man, doesn't mean it's okay with God. And of course, those that were slave owners, they didn't want to lose those slaves, because they were bringing in so much money. And that's kind of what's going on, I know, in Las Vegas, is the sin, of course, is bringing a lot of money. But as we know, you know, Jesus hates sin, you know, I always want to remind people of that, and also that we need to turn to Jesus, or we're going to burn in hell. That's true, you know, there would be sexual sin, you know, the lion and the, the horn mongering and all that kind of stuff, homosexuality, and we need to teach this to our children, we need to teach this to the community, we can't continually promote sin, I think we're going to be blessed as a nation. Even under state law, if you look under NRS two-oh-one-oh-ninety, "A delinquent child is known as one who is leading, or for any cause is in danger of leading, an idle, dissolute, lewd, or immoral life. It's also known as one who writes or uses vile, obscene, profane, or indecent language, or is guilty of indecent, immoral, or lascivious conduct." But we're promoting that in the city, right? Lasciviousness, lewdness, coarse drunkenness, all that kind of thing. So, under NRS one-ninety-six, like I've already told you many times, that's treason, for not holding the laws of the state, for not upholding the public decency, good morals, but though the sin is legalized, I know that eventually it's going to be de-legalized, of course, by our Messiah, the Lord Jesus Christ, when he comes back to rule and reign for a thousand years. But I just would encourage the council to work hard, to get right with the Lord, to fight for good morals, because if you're on the wrong side of the fence on judgment day, there's a lake of fire, and it's not where you want to be. And I encourage anyone watching this also to give their lives to Jesus Christ. God bless.
Next, please.
Good afternoon, Dorothy Barnes, Las Vegas resident. I've been coming in here, sharing some things, but I am a free moral agent, I'm not with the Secret Service, or military intelligence, or the FBI agents that work for the United States of America in the government sense, but there are some agents that are in this world that comes through the church community, there is a system known as the Commonwealth System, it's completely separate from the federal government, and state government, and city government system. And when one has been voted to become a part of the Commonwealth System, like I have, my name need to come off this program. I'm not in the sin business to encourage or support sin and your moral activity, maybe I have sin and come short of God's glory, but I'm not in the business of paying people to do it, because the mafia warned me before I left Louisiana, we have the Gambini family in Louisiana, and they told the church, when there's a free one among you all that don't want to accept y'all bribes or pay off, turn that person over, because we have inscriptions from the ones at the top not to keep people that's eligible to go up there, and I was eligible to go past them. They kept me and slandered me with this, to keep my money going into their drug racket to solicit my children and grandchildren to the organization as prostitutes, and the mafia warned me, if you pay other women to be that way, they're going to make you that way. I did not pay or vote for my money to go into programs to support other women and children into prostitution or homosexuality. The ones that did it, my ex-husband, mother, and sisters, because they were influenced by some white supremacists, that's trying to keep Negroes under them by getting them to live in sin. That's the only way they can promote a modern-day form of slavery with these programs, that they give people sinful, they can threaten them to be quiet, threaten to cut their tongues out, threaten them if they run their mouth, they'll kill off their family, they'll blow up their homes, they'll blow up churches, so people feel entrapped, people are afraid, they're afraid to come forward and tell things. So I'm trying to tell things secretly, that know how to tell things secretly, because the mafia is hired out to kill off anyone that won't accept the market of beasts. The market of beasts, if you read Revelation thirteen and twenty, first chapter, it says, "No one shall be able to buy nor sell lest they possess the market of beasts." Already in Connecticut, in some part of Florida, they're coming up with a cashless society idea, whereas you can, like in, you go in Sears, and they, they put the chip under your hand or forehead, and they run the scan, and you won't have to carry cash or credit cards, because they're out of control, stealing all these poor people's money, trying to pay women and children into prostitution, even high-class people are forced in. You see the drug addictions in Hollywood, you see it in Whitney Houston, people like Naomi Sims, and God knows how many other famous people that have gotten off into drugs and alcohol, because there's nobody up there to enforce the people to turn the free people over, and I'm a part of the free world. They had no right to make a choice, allow someone to make a choice for me that would jeopardize my life and help and other agents. There are other agents that come in this country, their lives are also jeopardized. I am an agent, and I have to do my job, and I need to be able to report in directly to the international CIA on my own ticket. Thank you.
Next, please.
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. I'm another tech. It's interesting how a lot of people evolve in, in Las Vegas over time. You hear good things about some people, and better things about others. I am. None of them. But that's another issue, but another time. That person's name was Steve Ross. He also happens to be your Orange Six Councilman. He did an exemplary job yesterday, and I'm sure he'll continue to do so. And in doing it, he was able to remain diplomatic with regard to the construction companies that are involved and the ownerships of those properties. And everything that was said by one of the property owners, one of their huge renown, their spokesperson said, "The issue was threefold, the issue of responsibility for worker's safety. Number one, the owner developer. Number two, the construction company. Number three, the union." And in the final side note, he added that the individual assurance of safety, of the worker's safety, would be up to the individual. On my book, the book stops at the top. You start at the bottom and trace it back. And so if you want to really have a clarified responsibility, quantification, you need to take into account what the equity is at all levels. The worker is the lowest. He's the least. He's the victim, not the perpetrator. Now, and another member of this city council, very impressive, not only in his own right, but also, and I think more significantly, on his better half. There is a lady in the judicial system. Her name is Judge Junie Glass-Wilson, who absolutely takes no nonsense of anybody. She is a zero-tolerance person like me, and she's doing an exemplary job. And I believe that perhaps her spouse's relationship might have been a part-assisted in that regard, because when you have two good people, it's better than one. The rest of you also have varying degrees of excellence to talk about. One in particular, perhaps a centerpiece, is known for apparently inadvertently having excessive use of water. Is that correct? But he's about to correct that situation, at least according to KXNT video, where he's the happiest mayor in the universe.
That's correct. I have to catch you loose, because other people would like to speak.
Although they're waiting. I just want to add one final thing to my mind. The universe already has a mayor. It's called Almighty God. I happen to know Almighty God. Almighty God's a friend of mine, and Mr. Mayor, all due respect, you're not Almighty God.
That is, I'll stipulate to that.
I'll give that.
Next, please.
Hello, my name is William Huggins, and I work for a living. I've been homeless since the age of 16. My mom was a caterer. My daddy was a war veteran, World War II. And I've been coming up all my life, living and everything, and I found Jesus Christ and things like that, but I'm still homeless now today. And as governor, you know, I see you doing great things for my community. I was born and raised in Las Vegas, and all these people doing great things for the community. But I haven't found a source yet where I can go to...
We're going to get it right here. Young lady at the end of the row there, she's going to help you.
Do you have paper or something like that?
She's going to help you. I promise you that.
Great.
That's why she's here, and I appreciate the fact you came down, and you're asking for help, because she will help you.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to let y'all know that the Lord love y'all and, you know, try and grasp and spread the word, because it's desolate out there, and the Lord's Word is not being heard. So now today, I just want to see if we can get some programs or something going that, you know, prophets like me can, you can help me to spread the Lord's Word as much as His earth, as well as He condones it to us. So I just want to say thank you for your time.
Okay, but please see that young lady. She'll take care of you.
Okay, okay.
Yes, good afternoon, I'm Mayor City Council. Actually, my name is Anthony Snowden, for the record. And actually, I'm here to ask for your help today. You know, we're in a very, very dire situation here. I know the mayor appointed Councilman Ross to sit on the Southern Nevada Workforce Investment Board on the elected officials portion of it, but since he has been sitting on that board, you know, they had to close down Nevada Business Services. Nevada Business Services was ostensibly hiring 1,500 youth in the community for summer jobs, and since Nevada Business Services is no longer in operation, that means we have a glut. We have 1,500 youth that's potentially not going to be able to be employed within this particular community. And I'm asking the city's help today in creating some jobs for these youth here. I mean, you have all these floors here, the Parks Recreation Department, various other departments here, and I'm asking that you could go through your human resources person and possibly put online, so they can put some jobs in the hopper, so we can employ some of these youth. I know they have monies from the Southern Nevada Workforce Investment Board. They are able to provide direct services for these youth here. They have like, I think, $400,000 is the figure that I've been quoting. So if they can go online with the city and perhaps to issue a waiver to the state, so they can allow them to hire some youth in this particular community. I know the county has a program, which is for intern program, and they're supposed to be hiring additional 100 students, and then they're supposed to actually hire another 100 in terms of the whole waiver issue, and also North Las Vegas. And I think that the city of Las Vegas is far behind the loop, so to speak, and I think that it's very important that we be from a world-class city and we provide opportunities for our youth here in this community. I want to know exactly if the city is able to prepare themselves to go online to human resources person and create some jobs for the youth in this community.
Yes, we're not allowed to take action today, Mr. ...
I understand that, sir.
But you have the program Batteries Included. I don't know whether you've checked that out or not.
I've checked it out, because I'm very familiar with the Workforce Investment Act, because I have been involved with that for quite some time here, and I just think that since we don't have anybody that's out there actually advocating for the youth, that it's important that the city officials, the people that sit in the office here, take an active role in doing it. I know that if we wait for somebody else to do it for us, oftentimes we miss the mark. It's time that we think outside the box, and we prepare ourselves to make sure that we provide opportunities for the youth in this community. Just in case in point, schools just went out, and I've been riding through the communities here, and I've been seeing seven, eight different youths just standing around, hanging out with nothing else to do. And I know that that kind of situation is involved, like the police, because they think that they're gang-related, gang-affiliated, for lack of nothing else to do but just hang out. I think that we should be providing opportunities rather than them to be matriculating to a criminal justice system, just because the fact don't have anything to do. And I think that it's important that at this juncture, that we allow the people that's in charge of the human resources program to go online, ask for these requests from the state, so they can get some youth employment for this summer. It's very vital. It's very important. You know, we need to try to do something to help these youth, and if we're not prepared to do that, then, you know, what do we expect for our youth to turn out to? What do we expect for them to have hope in?